And I believe we're good to go. All right, it is 9:00 a.m. So let's begin. Today is September 28, 2021. This is the regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. And we will begin with a moment of silence. Is there a moment of silence from anyone on the board? So I do know that we lost somebody in the area of Clear Lake. I've always known him as Frank. His last name, I believe, is Leonard. He was part of our South Shore Little League, definitely gave back to the community as often as he could, and is dearly missed by his friends and family, and unfortunately taken from us too soon. If we could please have a moment of silence. Vice Chair Crandall, you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as I listened to you, I reminded that, I believe I called on you last week. I tried to go in a circle and I failed to continue my circle this week. I apologize for that.[117.86][117.86](Laughter). Let's go ahead and move on. Do we have any extra items from board members or staff? I'm seeing heads shaking. So let's go ahead and move on. We have the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members wish to pull from the agenda? And I will be pulling item 5.6 for clarification purposes. And that is the only item that I am pulling. Let's go ahead and go to the public. Hold on, I haven't pulled up my participant list. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? If you're in the Zoom room, please dial star nine. If you're on the telephone or click the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your And seeing none, let's go ahead and come back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, items number 5.1 through 5.5, then 5.7 through 5.11.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Simon, second from Supervisor Pisca. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And since it's 9:03 a.m., let's go ahead and quickly go over item 5.6. And I see that Director Metcalf is with us. Again, this one is approve amendment number one to the agreement between the County of Lake and Manzanita House for fiscal year 2021-22 in the amount of $185,150. If you look at the agreement, it's actually for $186,150. There was a typo, so I wanted to make sure. I spoke with our county council. We needed to just pull this to make sure that our motion set the correct amount. That is the only change that I wanted to make, and so this is quick and easy unless Director Metcalf has something else to add.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. We should be good to go with that correction.
Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments from the board? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this item? Item 5.6. And seeing none in the boardroom and in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve amendment number one to the agreement between County of Lake and Manzanita House for fiscal year 2021-22 in the amount of $186,150.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Metcalf. And let's go ahead and move on to our 6.1 item, 9:05 a.m. Public input. This is for any public input not related to any of our agenda items. If it's on the agenda, please wait for that item to come up, or else if you want to raise your hand or come up to the microphone, you have three minutes. And let's go ahead and start in the boardroom.
Good morning. My name is Ray O'Leary. I'm with (inaudible). At Riviera West is where I live. I wanted to thank the supervisor at the end for the recommendation to contact the special committee, meaning Blue Ribbon Committee meeting that took place last week. I'm going to report on that just a little bit, and then I'm going to also report on the Dry Robinson Slough. The meeting that took place discussed primarily funds, trying to get funds, committee proposals, proposals to get money, proposals on studies, and we saw no results of anything, nothing, except to approve somebody who wanted to get some money for another study. So for all practical purposes, the thing that made it even more difficult was there were two water scientists, myself and three other people, who were waiting to speak at that meeting. And it ran over time, and they decided to open it up to the public, which consisted of maybe three people who were well-known to the committee. And then they just turned the speakers off. None of us could address that committee. None of us could ask a question. So I was a little disappointed from that standpoint, but I appreciate some of the people that were there and what they were trying to do. The scientists were very difficult because they spent four hours along with the rest of us listening to this meeting and could have zero input. That's first thing. Second thing is, is I wanted to remind the board and give you an example. There was no, there's not been any discussion on Robinson Slough. And the reason why that's important is if you can imagine the freeways out here and going in the droughts that we have been in, when the rain comes down, all of that material's going to come up off of the grounds and then flow back in. It becomes very slippery, very dangerous. Robinson Slough, if we get any meaningful rain at all, all the salts, all the particulates, all the nutrients are going to come up. And that's going to flood this lake, or this lake is going to get a lot of that material, assuming of course that the dam that was, is there, is cut through so the water can flow, because it's all blocked off. Nothing's going to happen. We can find no discussion on that subject matter at all. That's just one. Two is they've talked about the runoff from agriculture, et cetera. We all know what that is. And I've been living here for 20 years. I've heard that discussion for years, and they're still talking about it and the impact that it's having on the lake. They're still talking about the, not the asbestos, the mercury, just come out of those mines.
Your three minutes are up if you can make your final statement.
Okay, thank you. As I try to collect, okay. UC Davis sent a report to USCGS, and they said, if you have any questions from the public, call USGS or whatever it is. We can still find no cohesiveness in the material that the county has and how we can access it. It's extremely difficult to do because there's no centralization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments in the boardroom? And any comments in the Zoom room? I see no hands. And seeing none, let's go ahead and close public comment, and we will move on to item 6.2 or 9:06 a.m. item.
Mr. Chair, real quick, sir? The Middle Creek Restoration Committee is Monday.
I'm sorry, I, I.
The Middle Creek Restoration Committee meeting is Monday at 10:30.
Well.
So all you have to, so we'll get you the information to go ahead and attend that because that may be a place you get to express some of your concerns.
Just for a response, thank you very much for the help.
You're welcome.
We'll work it out a report that'll be somewhere around 100, 200 pages.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving on to item 6.2, 9:06 a.m. Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Employees Association, Units Number Three, Number Four, and Number Five and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. C.A.O. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm excited to be able to present the first of the labor agreements that are on your agenda today. You have a total of nine you'll be considering, either in the form of memorandums of understanding, as is this one, or resolutions for the unrepresented labor groups. LCEA is our largest labor group, considerably larger than the rest. Their employees are spread out over multiple departments, and we're grateful to them for all the work they perform every day to realize your board's vision. We worked hard and long with the LCEA labor representatives. They contributed significantly to this memorandum of understanding, and they told us on September 9th, all three of their units had voted to ratify this MOU. This MOU will span approximately three years and eight months and would complete implementation of the 2019 Class in Comp Study, which was conducted by CPS HR in four phases. Starting October 21, 2021, employees in this group would go to 98% of the market median determined by that study in October 2019. Effective the following July 1, 2022, employees would go to 100% of the median. This is equivalent to a 2% COLA. The following July 1, they would go to 102% of that median, which is equivalent to another 2% COLA. The following July 1, 2024, they would go to 105% of that median dating back to 2019, which is the equivalent of a 3% COLA. The, the October 2019 market median is understood to be the midpoint of the salaries in the counties we studied. There were 12 comparison counties. They included Calaveras, Calusa, Glen, Humboldt, Mendocino, Napa, Nevada, Sonoma, Sutter, Tahima, Yolo, and Yuba. These are primarily the counties that, that we compete with the most. Certainly, the counties that border us tend to be the ones that draw our trained employees away because they can still live in Lake County and commute to jobs there where historically they've received considerably more pay. The 2019 study was the first one that's been completed since 2003, and the counties that we studied were selected by a group of department heads and leaders of our labor groups as well, decided which ones would be the best to compare ourselves to. So in addition to salary, under this MOU, your board proposes to provide the air medical ambulance reach membership to employees at no cost. Historically, employees have paid that cost if they wanted to participate, and it's recommended that we offer that benefit to employees. The cost of the premium alone for all employees is about the price of one air ambulance ride for one individual. And then we're also proposing to increase life insurance coverage, where it would be expanded to the amount of each employee's annual base salary, but not to exceed $100,000. That would go into effect July 1, and the, whereas the reach membership would go into effect January 1. So a few other clarifying changes to this MOU. Salary step advancement is clarified in the event there is less than satisfactory performance. Clarification of salary upon promotion or reclassification. And then we updated language regarding longevity so that employees will retain longevity steps upon promotion. The subsequent longevity step after a promotion would take place five years after they've been in the new classification. So we're recommending your board adopt this MOU. We appreciate the great work that got us to this historic point, and that completes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from board members? So I do want to speak on this, and I'm just going to make a single statement, which pretty much covers the majority of the items that we're looking at on our timed items. This got started a while ago because Lake County was kind of in a flat line. It wasn't really moving in a direction that we needed it to. We had vacancies that prohibited us to be able to move forward. We have staff that are working beyond the norm of what we're asking them, we should be asking them to do. We have experienced here as a board trying to hire new department heads. Our public health officer is a perfect example of that. And it's been difficult to watch very qualified people slip through our fingers because we don't offer those, a salary level that is acceptable for people to want to work for us. Our sheriff has been explaining this to us the whole time, that they are losing people left and right because we are not providing the salaries we need. This is, this is a way to help us, and I keep getting reminded, and I, I was, I had some conversations yesterday about this, and I was told I should probably prepare something to say rather than off the head, but I decided that off the head was probably better and more from the heart. And I, I keep getting reminded by my neighbor, my colleague, Supervisor Simon, that we have a vision, and it's 2028. And in there, it says that we are looking to grow our economy and spur creation of quality local jobs. This helps to do so by filling in the vacant seats that are not able to get all the work done that we need to get done, that we want to improve our infrastructure. This is going to help to get those things done so we can file for more grants, so we can submit more projects and get more things done. We want to enhance our public safety. This is absolutely going to help. I know I spoke with John Drury, who's at the Sheriff's Department, who is right now doing recruiting, and this will absolutely help out to get people from the academy to us or get laterals from other areas to come here. There's a lot of positives that comes to this. But I also want to be real that this, this, this does come with some heavy lifting on our end as far as the Board of Supervisors, that we need to keep our eye on the ball, that economic development has to have the outcomes that we need to have. This is not a one-time sit-down and walk away and be happy. This creates more work for all of us to make sure that we stay focused and that we work hard so that the future doesn't just materialize out of nothing, it materializes because of the hard work that we continue to do. And I think that this is a huge step, one that I'm both nervous about and absolutely excited about all at the same time. And I just needed to express that I am happy to, for, for those that are on the front lines that have been seeing the results of the vacancies and the hard work and the fatigue, that there is, there is change in the air and there is change for the future, and we will continue to work for that to happen. And that I will stop at that, and I will, if there's no further comments from board members, I will open it up for the public. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair Sabatier. And yes, you know, today's a great day. We're going to go through these next few agenda items, but as you said, taking a step in the right direction to bring Lake County where it needs to be and to invest in the backbone, the workers that are, have sat here and worked through all these years, you know, and done a great job. But I think this is the step in the direction to get us where we need to go as Lake County for the long-term vision. So I just want to thank everybody for putting this together since I've been on the board, myself, and I'll say Supervisor Scott as we came on, as Carol Hutchinson set up a training program for us to meet with all the directors when we came on as a board member. And one of the resounding themes was vacancy rates, rate of pay, and where we're going in the future and how we're going to get there. And this is a huge step towards that. And as you said, yes, it puts more work and responsibility on the board, but this board making this decision today is committed to keep it moving forward over the next decade and the next seven generations as we look at it from a tribal nation standpoint here for the Lake County folks, and also to really ratify, which you guys have heard me say in my presentations, investing in the people that are doing the day-to-day work. We get to set up here on camera and do everything and get our face on that, come up with different ideas, but the real workforce is our administration, all of our employees, our, our safety personnel, the Sheriff's Department, everything. They do the hard work to take care of our constituents. So hopefully this is a step in the right direction to let them know how much they are appreciated and we understand what they do for this county. So that's really what I have to say today.
Thank you, Supervisor. If there's no further comments, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. And I see one hand up, Elizabeth Larson from Lake County News.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. I'm curious where the current salary levels for any of these agreements are listed. I don't find those in any of the paperwork. And I sent several questions to staff yesterday, and they did answer them, but that wasn't one of them. I'm also curious, it's my understanding that at mid-year, that the, the department budgets are supposed to be adjusted to cover these. So that raises the question, have these been budgeted? These raises? And is there a deadline for this study to be implemented? I'm also curious about whether or not these MOUs address the high insurance costs that have been a concern for employees in the past. I didn't quite get that in looking at them. I didn't see a difference. And it, just overall, you're speaking about history. I'm curious if this is the single largest raise, series of raises the county has ever given. Last year, I believe, you gave something out to the, it was about $5 million. This year, staff has told me that for one year, this will total 9.1 million, and I'm curious if that's going to be the same amount over every year of the MOUs. I'm also curious about whether any one-time funding is being used for any of these raises. And I'm curious about what the county vacancy rate is now and what you expect it to be after these raises are implemented. And as far as, as the future, I'm curious about what sort of economic analysis has accompanied the development of these documents. And Supervisor Sabatier mentioned economic development. When I asked staff yesterday about how to make sure that the county can, can be, can support these, I was told that, well, the board supports economic development, and that was, that was all I was told. So I'm curious about what, what do you do if, if that economic development does not come about the way you expect it to? And coming out of the pandemic, is, is it your analysis then that coming out of the pandemic, the county is stable enough financially? Actually, we're not even out of it. We're still probably in the middle of the pandemic. Can it support this level of long-term salary spending? And that's my questions for this MOU group.
Thank you for your questions. I'm looking at C.A.O. Hutchinson. Hopefully you were taking some notes because there were quite a few questions.
There were.
If you would like to.
They're all really good questions, so I appreciate the opportunity to address them. Stephen and I will probably tag team, and if I miss any of them, perhaps we can go back to the requestor to make sure we got them all. And your board may want to address the question about economic development and the work of your Economic Development Task Force and all of that. So to start with where salaries stand now, we absolutely can share that with, with Ms. Larson. If she would like to see those salary tables, we can send those to her. It's public information. So, but you know, there are 800 different county employees, so I can't speak to that off the top of our heads, but, but we can absolutely send that to her following today's meeting. Stephen, will you address the question of is it budgeted?
Yes, thank you, Carol. It is currently not in the budget, and that's because the agreements were not approved by the board yet. Is the funding available? Yes, it is. In which case, at mid-year budget, we will adjust every single one of our individual budget units to show the new revenue as well as expense. So it will be budgeted at mid-year.
Stephen, will you go on to address the question of can we afford this in the pandemic?
So in regards to that question, yes, we can. Actually, during the pandemic, just one funding source, for example, our sales tax, has come in over a million last year in fiscal year 2021, came in over a million dollars higher than we ever have in the pandemic environment. There are many factors, potential reasoning for it. Do we expect it to continue at that same level? Not necessarily at the same level, but increased over prior years? Yes. All of that, and property tax has increased and will continue to increase year over year. So it's, there are other extra funding sources available to help pay for this. And then the backstop where if our ongoing revenues do not fully cover these expenses, that's where the cannabis tax would come in to cover the rest, and we do have enough for many years within that funding source.
And Stephen, none of it is one-time funding, correct?
We do not consider any of it one-time funding, no.
Yeah. So then, moving on to the question about insurance, I am, I'm understanding the question to be, did we consider increasing the cost of the insurance benefit that the county presently provides? For this labor group that we're talking about right now, there's no change in, in insurance benefit. In fact, that's true of all the MOUs except, or all the agreements except one, and that is LCSMA, which we will discuss later, the Sheriff Management Group. We, right before we went back to the bargaining table with the employee groups, we did another employee survey to delve into what is most important to employees. We had done one a couple of years ago, and knowing that we were returning to the bargaining table, we felt that it was important to, to touch base with employees to see what, what they felt they needed most. A couple of years ago, resoundingly, employees told us salary was the most important thing. That message came through loud and clear again very recently, and so our focus was on raising up salaries and not adjusting the health benefit at this time. The hope would be that by raising salaries, people have more money in their pocket for their, the cost of their healthcare needs, and then the other two health-related benefits were given that, that I described earlier. And so then I'll, I'll yield to you, Mr. Chair, if you want to touch on the question about economic development for the county.
And I'll, I'll touch on a couple of the items. I know in my conversations, I went in-depth into the funding for this and spoke with Stephen Carter again yesterday. The idea is to do our best to never have to touch our cannabis taxes. It's there as a backup just in case. Right now, it looks like it's definitely within the realm of what we have. We also have some contingency funds that are set aside that have been left untouched for many years. And again, those are contingency funds, and cannabis tax comes after that. As far, there was one other question before I go into economic development. She asked about a deadline. I'm not quite sure what the question was regarding, but I know this is through 2025.
The labor agreements run through June 30th, 2025. There's no deadline for implementing the study per se, but the longer you wait on the study, the more stale the data becomes, and so the data is already approximately two years old. So there, there comes a point where the data doesn't mean much because other counties that we compared ourselves to have moved forward.
Correct. And I know that in doing some analysis, because we use the median of all of the 14 local jurisdictions that we looked at, I was doing some, some comparisons to our neighboring communities. We're highly competitive, sometimes just below, sometimes above what our neighboring communities in Mendocino and Humboldt and Tahima are doing. And I looked at Tahima because it's a very comparable county as far as size and the amount, the amount of people, the wealth of the area, and so on and so forth. But when comparing it to Sonoma County, the numbers, they still have a, I won't say stark difference, less of a difference, but we're not necessarily trying to match Sonoma County. That would be something that I don't believe that we would be trying to attain and wouldn't be attainable with the budget that we have. But it puts us in a better position. That's definitely for sure. And that's, that's the thing that we're trying to do is retention, not losing the amount of people that we keep losing, and being able to also recruit where people are more likely to come here for the salaries that are there. As far as economic development, I think that we have been absolutely on an economic development kick. I think we need to maybe pivot and, and look at other things, but if you look just for, as an example, through our cannabis taxes, the fact that we have an estimated $10 million coming in this year just from cannabis taxes is part of economic development that has been occurring in the last two to three years that creates employment and that creates secondary activities in our economy as well, not just the cannabis portion of it. There's definitely lots more conversation. There's definitely lots more conversations that are happening in different districts and those conversations will continue to happen. And we are, are looking at obviously bolstering, and I'm kind of going off in our, on, on different items. I'll, I'll be brief. We're looking at bolstering public safety, which is what helps with any kind of economic development because of predictability and stability of the environment. And we're looking at doing specific plans, like we're starting off in Clear Lake Oaks, to really get those communities to be as attractive as possible to stimulate the economy in the area, fill in those vacant commercial lots. So I think that there's, we're always busy having those conversations. We're seeing it happen in the past few years and I think we're going to continue seeing it as long as we continue to put the work in. And hopefully that responds if anyone else would like to comment on that. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, just like to talk a little bit about the Economic Development Task Force that we've put together and the work. You know, I think the simple answer there, focusing on infrastructure. As you know, we're working on the infrastructure to address sewer and water issues throughout the county. We know that the long-term viability of business operations and other things is looking at improving our road conditions throughout the county. That'll be a focus as we move forward with the Economic Development Task Force. Also, community development. We have just brought on a new Community Development Director that will be starting on October 4th. And we're looking at obviously general plan updates, area plan updates, and looking at streamlining the opportunities for folks to come in and start business here throughout Lake County. As we move forward with the Economic Development Task Force, also looking at the long-term conversation of housing, focusing on here in Lake County. That takes on a bunch of different aspects. But if you're going to attract the business that we know wants to come this way, moving out, the pandemic has really highlighted the housing opportunities here in Lake County for folks from the Bay Area. But it also highlights the opportunity for more hotel operations. We've done a great job of establishing our ag industry. We have the, you know, the best bass fishing lake in Lake County, but we need places for folks to stay. So all of this ties together as we're looking at the long-term viability of folks to really become that tourist destination to the Bay Area as we're moving through the next decade. You know, we want folks to come and enjoy the beauty that we all know that is Lake County, but then leave their tax dollars and go ahead and head on back home. But that transition is happening right now. We have a lot of folks that are coming from the Bay Area. They understand the beauty and the affordability that is still available in Lake County. And I've said it before, we are the undeveloped gem that is just north of the Bay Area and is starting to happen. So the Economic Development Task Force, as we move forward, looking at stabilizing the county's infrastructure, the county's streamlining of projects and development is looking forward. But it will also, as we move over the next couple of years, develop into bringing in the, the business owners also to really talk about what can be developed here. It was already touched on, the cannabis industry, we've done a good job of establishing the cultivation part of the industry. But there are also, as you say, ancillary businesses. There will be other opportunities for folks to really grow that industry and also have storefronts and other opportunities that will continue to bring in those types of revenues. We are also looking at really rebranding ourselves. The TID that we put together has done a great job of marketing Lake County. I think we're spending the money in the right way. And I've said it from the beginning, telling our story. There are plenty of reports out there that put a negative light on Lake County, but I think we're really starting to tell that story. And economic development is something that I know this board is really working at and will continue to do so. But we can only do that with the support of our staff and filling, filling those vacancy rates. It will take a while to see where we're at. I don't think, we haven't had the conversation of what we expect this to do, but we do expect those changes to be happening. And by mid-spring, to understand the impact of the decisions that we're making today. So as Bruno said, Chair Sabatier said, you know, there is work to be done, but this is going to open that door to get the work done. And once again, it'll go back to the workforce, the folks that are sitting in this room today and the ones listening on their, on the Zoom meeting that do the hard work to serve the constituents of Lake County. And I know this is a step in the right direction. So that's just a conversation on economic development and where the county's going. And I'm excited to have that conversation because before I came on the board or the things, I didn't, I didn't see that coming from the county, where we're going for the next decade or next 20 years. So I'm excited to be part of these conversations and taking a step in that direction to really become the county that I know we can.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Grant.
I won't be labor what Supervisor Simon and Chair Sabatier had stated, but I wanted to highlight that later today, there is a resolution about becoming part of the Golden State Connect Authority for the JPA. And that is involved with enhancing broadband in, in our area. That's going to help bolster the economic development in the county as well. So I just wanted to highlight that.
And I think there's even further on the agenda, just also the housing project. And I think that housing, I'm glad that Supervisor Simon brought it up, has been one of the probably largest piece of conversations we're having right now, trying to figure out what the exact plan is so we can bring something back to the board. And those conversations are exciting and absolutely necessary. I would also suggest maybe a little behind the time that we should have brought it in the first place, but we weren't prepared. But we, we need to get on top of that and make sure that we are not giving our funds to the city of Clear Lake or the city of Lakeport. When the state gives us funding, we should be ready and available to use those funds in the county to build more housing. And I know those conversations are happening and sooner than later, we'll be seeing those coming to the public and showing what the plan is and how we're going to move forward with that. Hopefully that answers all of the.
There are actually a couple more questions if I could? I'm sorry, there were a couple I missed, so.
Please.
Okay, thank you. That, that was a fabulous response on the economic development front. It is an exciting time to be a part of Lake County government. So two more questions that were asked. What is the county vacancy rate now? The HR Director just gave me the in-the-moment update. It is sitting at 21% of positions vacant. It's been hovering between 20 and 25% as long as anyone can remember. We need to set our sights on a fill rate of 90%, so 10% vacancy. That's really where corporate America cruises along. And boy, oh boy, would it be a great win for Lake County if we can get up to that level. And then are these the largest, single largest raises ever given? I can't speak to the dawn of time of Lake County, but close. I've been here 28 years. I've been here 28 years. And this is, these, what is proposed today exceeds anything I've seen in all those years. There, there were lean and dry years during the 28 years I have been with the county. Had the county been keeping pace with small colas all along, we wouldn't be looking at being so far behind the median of the counties we compared ourselves to. And so you wouldn't be looking at, at, at a leap at this level. Because really, this equates to making up for those years. So that completes the questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comment from, okay, let's go ahead and go back to public comment. We have Carl Carr, OE3.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good morning. Thank you Chair Sabatier, honorable members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As you said, my name is Carl Carr and I'm the Union Representative from Operating Engineers Local 3, representing LCEA Units 3, 4, and 5 as well as LCSEA Unit 10. I just want to take the time to thank everybody involved in bargaining these MOUs. I feel that they do go a long way to making Lake County a more competitive employer, an employer that will hopefully not only keep its current employees, but also one that will attract new ones to fill those numerous vacancies that Carol just spoke of. You know, I believe that these MOUs are a step in the right direction. And I just wanted to come on today to speak to the, to the interactions that we had and the willingness of the county to take the step forward to really develop and, and work towards making the county the county it needs to be to fill those vacancies. I, I love that goal of 90% fill rate. I think that would be awesome and wonderful to get there. And anything that the union can do to help is what we're willing to do. And that, and I hope that that's come through in our interactions with the administration and with management. And I just want to take the time to say thank you to all involved. It was a, a team effort and a team win, and I think that we're going in the right direction. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you very much. And that does it for our Zoom room. Anyone in the boardroom, please come to the microphone. And please state your name. Don't trip and thank you. And you have three minutes.
John Moss. I want to commend everybody who worked on this. I want to draw attention to something that might be painful, which is the grand jury report. The grand jury report goes into the person-to-person relationships that the supervisors and the administrators have with their employees. And the grand jury report recommends that there's more contact between.
And, and this is.
The employees. And this doesn't have anything to do with money.
Okay, so that.
But it does influence whether people come or go or have a good attitude. And so I hope you read the grand jury report word for word. Thank you.
Thank you. We have and we have responded, thank you. Next, please.
Good morning Board, Chair. I am Elizabeth Arnold, the LCA Union President. I represent Unit 3, 4, and 5, which is the group of about 600 employees, which is one of your largest unions. This MOU that we are asking the board to ratify is a combination of years of work on the negotiations. Your employees deserve this. They have worked hard through the years of attrition, constant wildfires, PSP events, and most recently, recently, the COVID-19 pandemic. This MOU was ratified anonymously by our units. County employees have been the training grounds for the other counties for so long and passing this MOU contains that. So many employees have worked countless hours doing not just their jobs, but doing the jobs of vacant positions around them. The public has suffered because of that. They don't get the quality of work they are entitled to when county employees are spread so thin. This MOU gives us the ability to retain those dedicated employees and give us the opportunity to fill those vacant positions with qualified staff. I want to say thank you to the county administration and the board of supervisors for all their efforts and diligence in seeing this through. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. And seeing no further comment. We're going to need your name.
Go get it. Chris Chakowski, President for Lake County Sheriff's Management Association.
Keep your mask on, we got the mic in front of you so we can hear you.
Gotcha. I know it's been a long time coming, a lot of work's been put into this since 2019, a lot of countless hours. And on behalf of our association, I want to thank the board, Carol, for your leadership in getting this done. It's an extremely valuable contract. We think it's going to attract people to this position, but it's also a fair contract. And not only with our association, we want to thank you the work that you put in with the other associations as well. So we think that's going to go a very, very long ways. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And seeing no further comments, let's bring it back to the board and Supervisor Scott has a comment.
You know, I just, you guys did it very eloquently, saying everything that needs to be said today. This is an exciting day. When I sat in this seat almost five years ago, I heard it loud and clear that we need to invest in our workforce. Our turnover rate was absolutely something we could not control. Our vacancy rate was way too high, we couldn't get the work done. We need to invest in our workforce. So it's exciting today that we are able to, hopefully, if this moves forward, which I think it will, be able to do what, what I promised that we would do with this work study. I know there was a lot of doubt that we would actually, you know, do the study and move forward and give the raises that are needed. So just a very exciting day today.
Thank you Supervisor Piska.
I just want to thank everybody that put in the long hours to do the research, to do the negotiations, to bring us the numbers. This is an exciting day, I'm so proud to be a part of this. I, I know this is a big step and sometimes you can, you can be a little nervous to take a big step, but we have, this is very well calculated. I feel very comfortable with all of this and I'm, I'm just so proud to be a part of this today.
Thank you very much. And can't find my agenda. I think I'm looking for action right now on item 6.2.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the MOU by and between the Lake County Employees Association, Units Number 3, 4, and 5, and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Randall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Piska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 6.3 or 907 AM item, consideration of memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Correctional Officers Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. CIO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there are many similarities in these MOUs and I won't repeat things that you've already heard. I'll just kind of go over that quickly and distinguish the things that are different as we go through these MOUs. And the first thing I want to point out is that the MOU attached to your agenda required a correction to provision that was discovered late yesterday afternoon. Provision 5.4.1, which is the uniform and equipment allowance, did not include reference to the Deputy Sheriff Trainee position. We had to add that in and we have since gathered new signatures on that MOU. We'll replace it before you sign it. This was something that had been added by side letter a few years ago when the sheriff began using that Deputy Sheriff Trainee classification and he has had a fair amount of success bringing in new employees in that way. And so we apologize for that error, we caught it late yesterday. And, and when you sign it, it will, it will have that in there. So these are the correctional officers and the dispatchers primarily included in this group. A lot of hard-working folks that certainly do tough and stressful jobs. This labor group, their chief negotiator advised us on August 2nd that they had voted to ratify. The MOU spans the same time period in the one just approved for LCEA. It includes bringing the salaries for these employees up to the same levels based on the same study. It includes the two health benefits that I outlined as well, the reach ambulance service and the increased life insurance benefit. A few other changes from the prior MOU. We standardized the language around the five-step salary system. We clarified salary step advancement. This was the same for the prior MOU. And clarification of salary upon promotion or reclass. And then also the longevity language so that employees don't lose it upon promotion. For dispatchers in particular, there's an additional benefit here at the request of this unit. And that is a differential in the amount of plus 2.5% for dispatchers who have earned intermediate, advanced, and supervisory post certificates. And then also at the request of the unit, we included language that they proposed and the sheriff agreed to with a little bit of revising around seniority shift bidding for those that work in the jail. So we're recommending your board adopt this MOU as well. We appreciate all the people that worked very hard to bring us to this point.
So I have a question for you. You said 5.2.3 is what the addition would be?
5.4.1.
And so it would be a, a change of what's there currently?
Yes, there's a, there's a job title that's not included in that list of job titles. It's got a couple of job titles there. It should also include Deputy Sheriff Trainee.
Okay, so in the second paragraph where it says, or in the first and second paragraph?
Let me open that as well.
I just want to make sure to be as descriptive as possible for us and the public if we're going to approve of an amendment.
Okay, sorry, it's, okay, so 5.4.1 is the provision that reads uniforms slash equipment allowance. And it says eligible employees of the Sheriff's Department with the rank of correctional aide, deputy sheriff's corrections 1, 2, and sergeants. And then it goes on to explain what they get. What you would add in there is Deputy Sheriff Trainee to those. And then you would do the same thing in the second paragraph where it refers to newly hired correctional aides, deputy sheriff's correction 1, 2, and sergeants, and then also add.
Trainee.
Trainee.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. Just do want to check with County Council, are we good to move forward with that? Are we good to move forward with that amendment as? Okay, perfect. Let's go ahead and open it up for any comments. Okay? And if I'm not mistaken, just to get a brief history, last year, we did or we did not approve of a MOU when we did the change.
We did not. This was one of the two groups that did not agree to a new MOU in 2020.
Okay. So this definitely brings us a little bit more together than we were last year. There was some disagreements, or we couldn't find that balance to agree upon on an MOU, and glad that we're able to move forward on this with our LCCOA. If there's no further comments from the Board, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone from the public have any questions? I see none in the boardroom. And I see none in the Zoom room. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board for action with amendment, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Correctional Officers Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025 with amendment of 5.41.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Piska. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our 908 AM Item, 6.4, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy District Attorneys Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a smaller group. It includes the attorneys that work both in the district attorney's office and in the child support department. And under this agreement, they get all the same benefits afforded to LCEA, identical in effect. So they're getting, as of October 21st, 98% of the median. The following July 1, another 2%. The following July 1 after that, another 2. And then July 1, 2024, the 3% COLA. They're getting the two health benefits, the reach ambulance service, and the increased life insurance contribution. And then the same clarifying language around salary step advancement, salary upon promotion, and longevity.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the Board on this? It's all seeming very repetitive. Let's open it up to the public. That was very inside-the-building sound.
Somebody's ducked, probably.
Looking up for a duck. Any comments in the Zoom room or the boardroom? And seeing none in either one, let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt the memorandum, the MOU by and between the Lake County Deputy District Attorneys Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to Item 6.5 or 909 AM Item, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Safety Employees Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're already picking up on the repetitive nature of things, and we're only through number five, so you can imagine the work that it took to get these all ready to go. So the Safety Employee Association represents all of the hard-working folks in probation, and also then the welfare fraud investigators who very recently have moved under the district attorney. And so this group, their chief negotiator told us that they had voted to ratify on August 27th. Same salary plan as for the other units, the same three health benefits as well, and then the same clarifying language on salary step advancement, salary upon promotion, and language around longevity. And then, given the fact that the welfare fraud investigator class has moved recently to the district attorney where there are references to the department head, we've added, it already stated chief probation officer, but we've added reference to district attorney as well.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none, open it up for the public in the boardroom and the Zoom room. Any comment? Seeing none in the boardroom and none in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the MOU by and between Lake County Safety Employees Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 6.6 or 910 AM Item, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is your Deputy Sheriff Association. It includes the patrol deputies as well as the district attorney investigators. These are folks that do critical jobs, very, very important to Lake County. This group voted to ratify on September 22nd, receiving the same salary as the other units, clarifying language around the five-step salary system, salary advancement, salary upon promotion, the longevity language as well that I've referenced previously, and then a little cleanup work on some outdated language that pertained to financial reports. And then, of course, the two benefits that the other groups are getting as well, the air ambulance and the increased life insurance benefit. With this MOU, there was also another item discovered late yesterday afternoon that required correction. If you look at the version you have attached to your agenda, provision 5.4.1.8 was a one-time vacation cash-out benefit that was not intended to continue, and so we called that to the attention of this group late yesterday. And the corrected MOU has been signed. I believe there was still one signature pending, but it will be ready for you by the time you are ready to sign, Mr. Chair. So please note that 4.1.8 had to be deleted.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Any comments or questions on this? And again, this is a group that we did not negotiate an MOU with last year. Happy to see this here. I'm going to say something, and I know what I'm saying is quite political, but in the last three weeks, 914 was the beginning. We did our budget. We allocated seven new positions to our sheriff's department, and here we are finalizing an MOU with their new salaries. We are absolutely funding the police because you can hold our sheriff and our department accountable and still provide them the tools and everything necessary to do their jobs. This is not a binary conversation. You can do both, and I believe that that's what this Board is doing today. So happy that we are doing this and looking forward to the vote. But first, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. I know that we do have a couple of hands up, and let's start with Gary Frase. And I see that you're unmuted, but we are not hearing you. Let's try that again.
Is that better?
There we go.
Okay. So my name is Gary Frase. I'm the president of the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association. First off, I would like to thank the Board as a whole. Carol, thank you for all the hard work that you put in to make this work. But on a personal level, I would like to thank Supervisor Sabatier for listening to the deputies and listening to the concerns of the sheriff's office. And we really appreciate that. We believe that this is a contract that the, between the county and the deputies, moving forward, will help recruit and retain quality deputies to protect the community that we all serve. We also would like to say thank you to the county as a whole. We appreciate the county working with the deputies, with our medical benefit, helping offset the rising cost of medical. It has really lifted a weight off of a lot of our members with families, and we really appreciate that a lot. That doesn't go unnoticed by us. We believe that this is a step in the right direction, and that we hope we can continue to move forward in the future, and we'll continue to work together in a positive way. So again, I'd like to thank all of the Board, Supervisors Sabatier and Carol, and for all the hard work that they've put in for this.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Elizabeth Larson from Lake County News. And I see that you're unmuted, but we can't hear you right now. Still can't hear you. I saw you unmuted and, or remuted and unmuted. At this moment, we still can't hear you. If it's possible to submit your question or try calling in through the phone number available to join Zoom, it's too bad because your microphone was working earlier. Is there a comment in the boardroom? Okay. So I have Elizabeth Larson saying that she will go ahead and call in, and since we kind of covered multiple agenda items, I will let her just have that question if we go ahead and move on. But we are going to move on since there's no more public comment at this moment in time, or at least can't provide the comment at this moment. So let's go ahead and bring it back to the Board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Deputy Sheriff's Association and the County of Lake for October 21st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025 with amendment of deletion of 4.1.8.
Second.
Thank you very much for remembering the amendment. I have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second from Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
And before we close this item, just checking in, is there a, did Elizabeth Larson call in? That way we can do it now while we're still somewhat on the item.
Mr. Chair, I can confirm no new phone numbers have dialed in since Elizabeth indicated you would be calling in, although we actually, we do have a new phone number now, so that may be heard.
Let's go ahead and try that one, and just so it can match with the item that we want
Phone 4550, is this Ms. Larson? You have permission to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So on the DSA MOU, so last year, as I recall, the DSA, there's been a proposed MOU, and the DSA had rejected it. And I'm curious about what the difference is, if you can speak to what the differences are between that document and the document you're approving today with the DSA. And I'm also curious about, since they worked without an MOU like the correctional officers did, I'm curious about, do they have to have, do you have to sign letters that kind of gets you through a year? What do you do when you don't have an MOU that's active? I'm also curious, Sergeant Frase mentioned the health benefits. I wanted to know if those are made permanent, the health benefits that the Board had offered the deputies? And I'm also curious if you have the vacancy rate for the deputies at this time.
Thank you for your questions. I do want to answer some of those. I know that the 80/20 that was done as a side letter last year is still a part of this. As far as is it permanent? MOUs are negotiated. 2025 will be most likely the next time that they are negotiated. And not to say that everything is on the table at that time, but if the negotiations change that, that's possible. That will be up to the Board that's there and the negotiating team that is a part of that team to see which direction that everybody wishes to go. And I will ask CAO Hutchinson to respond to the difference compared to the MOU last year that was offered and this one.
Well, the caller can go back and look at those MOUs. They are, or excuse me, what was proposed, they are online. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but I believe it was October 20th, 2020. They are attached to the agenda. But speaking from memory, generally, what the Board was able to do the first time around was, for non-management staff, was implement the salary study at 85% of median. And as you recall, the employees in this group, LCDSA, were already paid above that median, and so for that reason, the terms of the agreement were not satisfactory to them generally.
Correct. And just to be more transparent, because of the comment that was just made, yes, right now, everybody is seeing the same general increase towards a 98% to begin with. At this point, when it comes to actual pay, there will be less of a percentage for those that were being Y-rated, which is the term that we were using before, which is that they were already above the median of what was proposed last time. And eventually, those people will get out of their Y-rating, which 98% the majority do, and then once we do the next following years
Then they all do at 98%.
They all do in the following years.
No further Y-rating. This group was not Y-rated last year because they didn't agree to the agreement.
Yes.
So that's pretty much it.
Trying to think if there was another question that I might have missed.
Oh, the vacancy rate for the sheriff.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know if Chris knows.
So not too long ago, we had to pull some of our special assignments back and created some issues with the vacancies. When we put the special signs back into their positions, it can open up three to four vacant positions, vacant positions. And I believe last time I looked, we were down two to three deputies. So when we put people back in their assignments, we're going to be down about six to seven deputies, I believe. So that's where we're at.
And I think that part of the, it's hard to look at only one specific department when it comes to the overall work from the sheriff's department. There's the jail, there's the sheriff deputies, and a lot of, the only mandate that we have from the state is you need to have a jail, and you need to manage that jail. And we've been kind of having to move people around to fulfill that mandate over at the jail, which makes it look like we have larger vacancies on one side possibly than the other. But overall, we do have some issues with having to move people around to be able to fill in the gaps that we have to fill in.
Correct. We got three deputies currently in dispatch, assigned to dispatch, fulfilling a dispatcher role. So we are always moving bodies around in our sheriff's office, but right now, I believe we're down about six to seven deputies. That's with our special assignments.
Right. Thank you very much. Any further public comments? We had already gone through that. I see no hands up, both in the boardroom and the Zoom room, and so we already took action on the item. So let's go ahead and close this item down and move on to 6.7 or 911 Item, Consideration of Resolution Establishing Salaries and Benefits for Employees Assigned to the Confidential Units, Section A, for October 21st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you just stated, this one is by resolution because this is an unrepresented group. These confidential employees work in the administrative office, human resources, county council, and in the auditor controller's office. They're getting the same deal as the other groups, where they will go to 98% of market median October 21st, and then 2% market median October 21st, and then 2%, 2%, and 3% each subsequent July. They'll also get the REACH helicopter, air ambulance, and life insurance benefit, and then they have the same clarifying language around salary step advancement, salary upon promotion or reclassification, and longevity.
Thank you very much. Any comments from supervisors? All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comment from the public, both in the boardroom and Zoom room? And seeing none in either one, let's bring it back for action on 6.7.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the condition of resolution establishing salaries and benefits for employees assigned to the confidential unit, Section A, for October 21st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Ms. Grant real quick, since we have two more resolutions. Do we just offer the resolution? And no need to go through that? Okay. No worries. Next one is 6.8, 9:12 a.m. item, Consideration of Resolution Establishing Salaries and Benefits for Employees Assigned to the Confidential Unit, Section B, for October 21st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025. Cao Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this group is the second of the two confidential units. It also is unrepresented, which is why you have it before you as a resolution instead of an MOU. This group includes the attorneys that work for the county council's office. And this group is getting the same deal as the one just presented, where they're going to the median at the same pace and levels as confidential A. They're also getting the REACH air ambulance benefit and the life insurance benefit, and the same clarifying language in their MOU around longevity, salary on promotion, salary step advancement.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the board? Seeing none. Any comments from the public, both the Zoom room and the boardroom? And seeing none in neither, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the resolution.
Offered, the resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.9 or 9:13 a.m. item, Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Lake County Sheriff's Management Association and the County of Lake for November 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025. Cao Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, we're back to an MOU. This is the last of the MOUs you will consider because the Lake County Sheriff Management Association is our newest represented group. They've been in existence for a couple of years now. This is the sheriff's leadership staff, both in his administration and in the jail. They are receiving the same salary benefit as all the other groups. Because they are management staff, they will also, under this agreement, they will receive a new benefit of having an annual option to cash out unused vacation time for those that have accrued more than 200 hours of vacation time on the books. As seems to be typical of management staff, because they are plugging holes and stepping up in disasters and doing all they do, it can be difficult to use vacation time, and so people that are not able to use it begin losing it at a certain point.
I'm not sure if you need the microphone closer because you're kind of going in and out. Sorry.
Okay, sorry. So, so we want to make sure, or want to do our best to minimize the chance that these staff will lose vacation accruals, and so they would have the option, if they've accrued more than 200 hours, to cash out 40 per year of vacation time. And then also, in an effort to make our management benefit package more competitive with what is provided in other counties, this MOU would increase the administrative leave, which is presently allocated at 40 hours per year to 60 hours per year, and there is a potential to cash that out as well. Of course, this MOU has the same two health benefits, the REACH air ambulance and the life insurance benefit. And probably what's most noteworthy about this MOU is that it would provide this group with the same health benefit contribution as their LCDSA subordinates. I'm referring to the 80-20 plan, where the county participates at 80% of the cost of the plan. And the reason we're bringing forward this recommendation is, the union explained it pretty simply, their, the future sheriff management employees typically come from their subordinate classes. And so it's a disincentive for someone working in LCDSA to consider promoting to this unit because they would lose the 80-20 benefit. And so based on that argument and request of this unit, we're recommending that that benefit be granted to them. And so then, same clarifying language around five-step salary system, salary step advancement, salary upon promotion or reclassification, longevity language as well. And then there had been a typographical error regarding vacation accrual that had been perpetuated in earlier agreements. It should read 20 hours after 20 years, and it does state that in this agreement. However, it had been an error that, that had popped up last year. All management employees in the other unit get the 200 hours after 20 years, and so this group would be consistent with that. So the last thing I want to say about this group, since they are a management group that I think is noteworthy, is as your board recalls, last year, when you were able to do the first step in implementing the salary study, non-management staff was given 85% of median, whereas management staff was given only 80, given the high cost of, of implementing at a higher level for management staff. And what we found in the study was that management salaries tended to be the furthest off from their comparison counties. And so I think it's important to express our gratitude to management employees for their patience in waiting for us to catch them up, because now everybody will be at 98% of median to start, and then we'll continue to move forward after that.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for the public, both in the boardroom and the Zoom room. And we have a comment from phone 4550, which I believe is Elizabeth Larson from Lake County News.
Ms. Larson, please hit star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Just a quick typo that I noticed on page 13. It says on your, on the declared holidays for this unit, number nine, Thanksgiving Day, fourth Thursday, and November 4th is missed. It, it should be F-O-U-R-C-E.
I had trouble hearing her. Did you catch that, Mr. Chair?
I'm looking at it right now. It's on page 13 of the MOU. It's in the holidays, and it says fourth Thursday, November.
Yeah, there's a typographical error.
Forgetting, forgot a U.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for catching that. And no further hands up in the Zoom room, and any hands up in the boardroom? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action with the amendment.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt memorandum of understanding by and between the Lake County Sheriff's Management Association and the County of Lake for November 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025 with amendments and corrections.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor.
No, right. I was not.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Pisca. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And this is our last one here, consideration, or 6.10 or 9:14 a.m. item, Consideration of Resolution Establishing Salaries and Benefits for Management Employees for the period from November 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025. Cao Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the management resolution. It is your board's primary leadership staff. It includes department heads, it includes elected officials, it includes yourself, and then it includes the management employees that support all of those efforts as well. Again, I want to note that this particular group waited longer than, than the rest, as did LC-SMA in my earlier comments, because last year, when we implemented, this group was put at 80%. So these are the people we rely on to lead and direct the work of our departments, and so we're especially grateful to them for their patience and understanding as we reach this point. So all of the same salary and benefits being provided to this group as, as the rest in terms of salary, the language clarifications, the REACH and life insurance benefits. Couple of minor changes. We updated references to chief probation officer and chief deputy probation officer, and instead now refer to all of those references as peace officer, which means the other peace officer classifications in this group would also receive the educational incentives that those, that their subordinate classes receive. Like the LC-SMA MOU that your board just completed, the administrative leave benefit would be increased from 40 to 60, and the, and this group would also be afforded the option to cash out 40 hours of unused vacation time if they have annually, if they have accrued more than 200 hours. And so I believe that, oh, okay, a couple of more, a couple of additional comments. As I mentioned, your board is included in this MOU, and I think it's important to point out that your salary will remain flat, as you have directed. It remained flat last year. There has been misinformation floating out around that you gave yourselves a raise. You didn't last year, and you're not now, so that too is very important to note for the public. And, and then just a final comment, as we move toward wrapping these up, it might seem like this completes it, and it's all done. What is, what is not done is what's next after this. And what's next after this is a whole lot of work for payroll to crank this out for the December 1st payday, and we really value their commitment and their willingness to hang in there with us. It took us an extra week or two to get this on the agenda, and they were patient and have indicated their commitment to keep this thing moving along. And the last thing I should go back and touch on is that I talked about the increased admin leave and vacation cash out for the appointed employees that are within this MOU. For the elected folks that are here, they don't ordinarily earn those types of benefits. They earn a percentage of gross salary that is paid out to them, and so their percentage of gross salary has been increased to offset, or well, to compare to those benefits that the appointed employees in this unit will get.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? I just want to make a quick comment. In last year's comparison to all other units that we discussed, and it was discussed by Cao Hutchinson just earlier, that our management had taken 80% instead of 85%. And I, I appreciate that because while work needs to be managed and overlooked and, and looking at the big picture at all times, it, it's the front lines that really get the work done as well. It takes both. And sometimes leadership needs to make that sacrifice in order for us to be able to climb forward, and that was appreciated sacrifice that was made last year so that we could afford to do the things that we were doing in order to move us forward. And, and this year, we are capable of moving everyone forward up at the same level. And as a board, I am still very proud, I said this during our budget, that we are making the sacrifice, that this is not about us, this is about what comes out of this for the betterment of our communities, and the better treatment of our staff to feel good about coming to work, to feel proud to come to work, and to be motivated to continue to do the great work that we do for our communities. So thank you to our board for that. And with that, if there's no further comments or questions, I'm going to open it up for the public. And we have a question or comment from Elizabeth Larson, phone 4550.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I had a question about pension obligations. It's my understanding through CalPERS that if, if an agency provides a salary increase with more than 3%, it can drive up fee for year contribution rates significantly. So I'm, I'm curious if that has been figured into these calculations. I'm also, and I'd asked this previously, and I, it didn't quite get answered. It was my understanding that this is going to cost 9.1 million a year for all of these MOUs over the, and I'm, I want to make sure that it is 9.1 million a year over the, each, for each year. I'm also curious if there are going to be any additional accountability and performance measures, especially for management, under these new MOUs. And I'm curious about what single job gets the highest raise in, in all of this. And outside of the vacancy, we've discussed vacancy, but I've never really heard vacancy discussed as it relates to department heads. And so I'm curious to know what kind of vacancy rate you have for department heads and management.
Thank you very much for those questions. Cao Hutchinson, would you like to respond to some of those?
Yeah, I'll first defer to Stephen Carter to address the CalPERS question, and then also the salary, or excuse me, the total amount per year that this will cost.
Thank you. So first of all, yes, CalPERS is considered within this proposal. The part that goes into what our rate that we pay to CalPERS is our UAL as well as our normal costs. Our normal costs will go up simply because it's a percentage of our payroll, but the UAL each year is a set amount that will stay the same and not increase, so it will slightly increase year over year for CalPERS, which is considered within our numbers. And then the 9.1 million comment, that's year one maximum. So if we even have one vacancy, it's not going to be that much. And that 9.1 would continue each year, yes, but it's not an increase of 9 million each year. So from year one to two, the maximum increase is just over $2 million. So it is a much smaller increase year over year after the first year. The big jump is the first year.
Thank you.
Okay, and so then to circle back, she asked, was the question management vacancies or department head vacancies? Either way, I'll have to get her that information. I just want to make sure I'm answering it properly.
Is it possible to get Elizabeth back on real quick so we make sure to get her the right information? Get that clarification?
So while we're waiting for that, I'll go ahead and address what position or positions are getting the, the highest raise. I believe that was how it was phrased. In this scenario, all positions are going from 80 to 98% of median. And of course, you know, the gap is bigger for positions that are paid more. And as is customary in county government, the county administrative officer position is the top paid position in the county.
I'm sorry to correct you. I might be wrong on this, but I thought it was the PHO.
You know, you might be right with that.
I think the PHO is at a little bit higher.
Just a little.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bruno. So was it, was it management vacancies or was it department head vacancies that she wishes answered?
Well, actually, both. If there's a difference, I'd like just to get an idea of what, what vacancy rate goes for both.
Okay, we will get you that information, along with the salary scales as they are presently.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carter, you had something additional to add?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify on the 9.1 million dollar figure. That is for all MOUs together, so that's all 1,038 FTEs related to this. It's not just general fund or non-general fund, so it's state, federal funded as well as general fund.
And it's equivalent to about 2.8% of the approved county budget for the current fiscal year. So then the last question, I believe, was what about performance measures? And it's equivalent to about 2.8% of the approved county budget for the current fiscal year. So then the last question, I believe, was what about performance measures? And Mr. Chair, I'm going to defer to you. You may want to speak to the new department head evaluation policy that has been recently approved.
And so, we just did that, what was that, last week, I think, or two weeks ago that we approved?
Two weeks ago.
They're all blending together. But we have formalized a process that we have been practicing to see how it's working out for us, and finally, we formalized it into an actual policy. Our evaluations have been turned into goal setting as well as a conversation of how things are going in the current year and what is expected to happen in the upcoming fiscal year. The idea of the goal setting is that we need to match our budgets to what our goals are. And if we have those conversations, which we will begin to have those conversations in October and November, those will be our initial evals post-formalizing the policy, but then we will be meeting in early February or March due to the fact that the budget process starts in about March or April so that we can make sure that we are getting ready for what is it that we want to get accomplished, what are our goals with each department, and what are our, in February, we plan to meet also for a workshop for what are our board goals, just like we had this year where the focused community revitalization project came out of. And so that is one way to hold us as board members accountable and to hold our departments accountable for making sure that we are advancing on our goals, that we are advancing on what we are working on, and that there is just overall progress in the entire county. And if that was the last question?
Just to add to that?
Please.
Not to mention the ad hoc committees that have been working with the directors, the meetings that we have weekly, we've been adding interviews with different department heads and conducting their evaluations quarterly. We've been touching base on all of them since last year, since we realized we had to be more intimately involved to help give the support needed to the department heads and the managers. So, that's another thing that this board's committed to and not minding getting out at 7:00 PM at times, so it's what it is.
It is what it is. And I agree that there have been some committees, I don't know that there's committees for every department, but definitely committees for some departments that have been vocalized here in public, that those committees have been formed. Those committees are in a support position to what the board is looking to get done. And so, it makes for easier and continuous conversations to make sure that we're on track with what the board guidance is. And if there's nothing further?
We do have one more hand up.
We do have one more hand up, and Director Howe.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Rob Howe, Chief Probation Officer of the county. Here in probation, we have employees in LCEA, LCSAA, and management, so I wanted to give a thank you to admin and the board for the improvement across the board. Cao Hutchinson spoke a little early about her time here, and I'm in the same boat, I have about 30 years here, and this is the most significant improvement I've seen to employee salary and benefits, very appreciated. I expect it's going to do really good things for employee recruitment and retention. On another note, as a manager, I wanted to thank again Cao Hutchinson, the board for allowing us a voice. Typically with management, we don't have a bargaining unit, so I'd see this resolution or MOU when it's done, that's just how it was, but that hasn't been the case. We had a lot of interactive discussions, and I was thankful for that. Thankful for the board to allow it, Cao Hutchinson and admin for setting it up, and the board members, Simon and Scott, that were part of that, appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that completes our public comment, both in the Zoom room and in the boardroom, and let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
I'll offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered.
Has amended? Wasn't there a typo?
Nope, not on this one. I think that we made changes to the one that is proposed here, but no typo from what is proposed here. Just checking for, making sure that's correct?
No typo.
Okay. And so, resolution has been offered. Joanna, roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paista?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
I know this is the last thing, but that was a pretty historic day.
And I think we can keep going, I think our timeline, are we good with going? Anybody looking to have a quick 5-10 minute break? So, let's move on with 6:11. Addendum, 9:30 AM, presentation of employee service awards. And I know it says it's sponsored here by the Board of Supervisors, but I believe that Cao Hutchinson and Director Samick from our Human Resources will be reading out the names of those who have served not just for the County of Lake as an agency, but served the people of Lake as residents and providing the services necessary for everything that we need. And so, if we can go ahead and read the list and introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have some extraordinary awards to give out today, and HR Director Pam Samick is going to do that. Pam, can you adjust your camera just a little there?
And you are still muted.
Yeah, there you go. It's...
Better?
That's good.
All right, let me share screen. We want to start with the employees who have five years of service. Robert Chalmers, Kelly Cosman, Dana Koeners, Jason Cox, Anthony Valdez, Michael Lemon, Tabitha Tant, Michelle Lampkin, Chelsea Perez, Lori La Laguna, Gina Griffin, Christopher Ringer, Stacy Schofield, Dale Carnathan, Joseph Lyons, Tamara Mitchell, Nathaniel Newton, Maria Allen, Kelly Hayward, Anastia Levarin, Josephine Mustang, Kathleen Noble, Frederick Penya, Carrie Sheenan, Gordon Short, Nicole Stray, Shawnee Valencia. Next, we'd like to honor the employees with 10 years of service. Patricia Winger, Jerry Driver, Jared McCullough, David Alves, Joe Barrio, Renee Ken, Philip Spooner, and LeAnn Kyler. Next, we'd like to honor those with 15 years of service. Billy Kirkendell, David Bingham, Gordon Hatchett, Peter Jordan, Tiffany Pickens, Jose Salazar, Nicole Moreland, Janet Boss, Walter White, Michelle Dobie, Christina Lloyd, Matthew Lucas, Nancy Mitchell. Next, we'd like to honor those employees with 20 years of service. Marilyn Higgins, Timothy Copleaser, Tina Rubin, Julie Steiner, Charlene Ellis, Michael Carmichael, Richard Ward. Next, we'd like to honor those with 25 years of service. Richard Hemcliff. Next, 30 years of service. Gail Woodworth. And last, we'd like to honor one employee with 40 years of service. Kathy Sederlin. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director Samick. Amazing the amount of people that have dedicated their life, their time, their efforts, their sweat, blood, and tears to making this county a better place. I can't believe that we are celebrating somebody's 30th and 40th years of service. That is more than dedication. That is absolutely giving a part of yourself to the people you serve. Couldn't be more proud of the people on the list here today, and also absolutely perfect to coexist on the same agenda as we are trying to increase the salaries and contributions to say you deserve to have these things, because everyone is working as hard as they can to make this place a better place, and really appreciate the list. Congratulations to everyone, thank you to everyone. Proud moment, thank you. Any further comments? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public, please. And we have somebody in the boardroom? Nope, just getting up to live. We have Marcy Harrison on the Zoom room, if we could please unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to briefly congratulate Kathy on her 40 years of service. This is a great accomplishment, and I feel I can speak for many when I say we are very lucky to have her serving as our Articulation Controller. She's admired for her strong work ethic and integrity, as well as her dedication to the management of our county finances. I've had the pleasure of working with Kathy for almost 17 years, and I'm very thankful for her mentorship and leadership. Again, thank you Kathy for all that you do.
Thank you very much for those words. Anything further from the public? And if not, bringing it back to the board, any final comments before we move on? And thank you for putting this list together, and again, thank you to all of the employees on the list today. Your dedication is not unnoticed. And with that, I think we're going to take a 10-minute break, so let's go ahead and come back at 10:53 AM. Are we back on? All right, ready, rolls, everybody ready? 10:53 AM, let's go ahead and continue and reconvene the meeting. We are going to go to item 6.12, our 10:15 AM item, sitting as the Lake County Housing Commission, Board of Housing Commissioners. A, consideration of rural communities housing development corporation request to divest security and previous development interest in real property. And B, consideration of agreement to develop affordable housing at 6853 Collier Avenue in Nice. Cao Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have the honor of welcoming Susan Parker back.
Your mic, please.
I have the honor of welcoming Susan Parker back. This has been her project, and she's going to introduce it today, and then we'll also welcome Ryan LaRue from RCHDC.
Good morning, board. As you may recall, in 2012, the State of California dissolved all redevelopment authorities. This action ended the funding to the Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation, or better known as RCHDC, to develop the affordable housing in the Collier Avenue area in Nice. The project stalled due to the lack of funding and inability to obtain additional financing or tax credits due to the existing lanes. RCHDC approached the county and requested that the county forgive the forgivable loans. On April 6th of this year, your board authorized the development of a new agreement to develop affordable housing at 6853 Collier Avenue. This effort also included developing the assorted legal instruments needed to divest the county's security interests and pre-existing restrictions. For this consideration, RCHDC will complete the following actions. They will enter into agreements with Behavioral Health Services to access funding for this project. They will secure and utilize low-income housing tax credits or other applicable funding sources to construct, manage, and fund the long-term maintenance of this project. They will convey the property to the housing authority for $1, should there be a default, and repay the Rural Community Assistance Corporation loans within 90 days of the default. And lastly, once funding has been secured and construction completed, they will receive a certificate of occupancy within five days of securing all funding. So, I'm available to answer any questions, and so is the Executive Director, Ryan LaRue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions on this item? I know that it's a long-term item that looks like it's culminating to a finale as far as cleaning things up and getting ready to reboot, and just hoping that at the state level and RCHCD that we're able to grab the funding that's available for us so we can go ahead and get moving forward and stop with this paperwork stuff to clean things up, but it's what we need to do. So, I'm happy that we're at this state and that we're able to take that next big step. And with no further comments, Supervisor Crandall?
Very excited, and you know, it's in District 3, of course, on Collier Avenue, and it's the space that's been open for quite some time. I've actually seen this in different arenas, also be proposed at different things, and so it's really refreshing to see something finally come of it, or at least the ball's rolling in that direction, so.
Yep, thank you very much. And I saw that Director Metcalf just popped up, wondering if you would like to speak on this item, since this is related to behavioral health as well. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Todd Metcalf, Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I want to thank Susan and Ryan for all of your work on this as this thing slowly lurches forward, and I'm just excited about this because this will be the final piece of the housing puzzle for our behavioral health clients. You know, we already have transitional housing in the form of Hope Center in the city of Clear Lake, but this will be the final part of that, that we can provide permanent supportive housing to our folks in this community. So, I applaud the work and am excited to be able to be a part of it. So, thank you, all who've been involved in this as we move it forward. And it's been many, because it's been many years. So, let's go ahead and open it up to the public, and I see no comment on this item from the boardroom, and I see no hands up from the Zoom room. So, let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back. And Mr. LaRue, you came all this way to be with us, I just want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak and introduce yourself, just in case you had some words for us.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I would just like to thank the county staff, and specifically Todd and Carol and Susan for all their hard work in getting us to this point. I know it was a difficult web we had to unravel here, so really excited to clean up this project and be able to move forward with funding, and just really excited to work with you all again. And as you know, we have a decent presence in Lake County, and so looking forward to serving our community here, and so just happy to be here and to be at this point. So, thank you so much for your consideration of working with us on this project.
Thank you very much. And if there's no further comments or questions, looking for some action.
Go ahead and see your district.
So, first, I would like to thank Susan Parker for all her hard work as well, because I know she put a lot of effort into this. And so, I'd like to motion to approve agreement to develop affordable housing, 6853 Collier Avenue, Nice, California.
If I may, let's start with Part A.
Oh, where's the... Oh, I'd like to motion to consider the consideration of Rural Community Housing Development Corporation request to divest security and previous development interest in real property.
Second? We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, and we have a second from Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please.
Sorry, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paista?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Yes.
And that was a second yes from Supervisor Paista, that was not my... That was not my yes, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
She just wanted to make sure she was heard. Loud and clear. Looking for the next Part B motion.
So I'll motion, Mr. Chair, to the consideration of agreement to develop affordable housing on 6853 Collier Avenue, Nice, California.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all who did put work on this. It's good to be in this position. Let's keep moving forward.
Lots of things to cheer about.
Yes.
I was actually thinking about lots of things to be cheering about today.
And so with that, let's go ahead and move on to our 10:30 a.m. item, 6.13, Presentation by PG&E Representatives on Power Outages Occurring in Lake County. And let's see, I see that we do have Melinda Rivera with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Sabatier, and good morning, County Board of Supervisors and County Administrator. Can you hear me and see me?
We can see you and hear you loud and clear.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time this morning. I am, I have not used this platform on this machine, so let me see if I can go ahead and share the document. So please just give me one moment while I bring the presentation deck up, I hope. Hang on just one second. Sorry, let me just.
No worries.
It's always fun to do this, right? Okay, I think. All right.
Perfect.
Chair Sabatier and the County Board of Supervisors, can you see a blue, PG&E blue PowerPoint?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. All right, huge relief. Thank you so much. Okay, so good morning, County Board of Supervisors, County Administrator. Thank you very much for your time this morning in allowing us to present to you some information about PG&E's work to mitigate wildfire risks in Lake County and to provide additional information on power outages in Lake County. I'm joined this morning by the Regional Vice President for the North Coast Region of California, which includes Lake County. His name is Ron Richardson, so he'll be presenting with me this morning. And we're also joined by Carl Shaunerfer, who is the Senior Division Lead for the North Coast Region, which again includes Lake County, Mendocino County, and Humboldt County. So this morning, I'm going to talk with you about our wildfire safety program. California, as you know, continues to experience an increase in wildfire risk and a longer wildfire season. On this slide, we are, on this slide, we are sharing one of the tools we use when assessing wildfire risk in your community. This is the fire threat map of California. It was developed by the CPUC in coordination with CAL FIRE and the U.S. Forest Service. And it's based on input from electric utilities, infrastructure providers, and other first responders and public safety agencies. This map helps to plan for potential wildfire and focused prevention efforts. You can see Lake County here on this map. And you can find this map and zoom in to particular locations, communities, and addresses by So we'd like to provide some additional context for the community wildfire safety program with just explaining that PG&E is looking to provide additional resources to support our communities before, during, and after public safety power shut-off events by employing the vegetation management program to manage trees and other vegetation located near power lines, continuing to harden lines and install sectionalizing devices that help reduce the size and the impacts of those public safety power shut-off events. In addition, we're also testing some additional tools and technologies, Ron will talk some more about this in a few minutes, to pinpoint how to best prevent and respond to the risk of wildfires. We all rely on electricity every day. We want to make sure that we work with our communities on solutions that minimize risks during times of high fire threat. So our focus with our wildfire safety work is not just to build our system for the climate risk that we are facing now, but also for the climate risk that we are going to continue to be facing and will be facing in the future. On this next section, we'll speak to enhanced power line safety settings in high fire threat areas. And so I'm now going to turn the presentation over to our Regional Vice President, Ron Richardson.
Thank you, Melinda, and good morning, everybody. So on this slide here, it's to reduce wildfire risk, we are implementing the several additional safety measures given historical weather conditions. Number one that we're doing is implementing the enhanced power line safety settings. This is a setting that we're putting on the line that's going to be able to trip the line very quickly. It's going to be about a tenth of a second for that line to trip when it sees a fault. The second piece is, is that we're planning the 10,000 miles of undergrounding overhead electrical distribution lines. There's a team developed now that is currently working on that to come up with that plan. The other piece too that we're looking, or we're actually doing is responding to all electrical outages as an emergency response. We have a metric now that measures the emergency response to make sure that we're there within an hour to make sure we can relieve the police or the fire department when we have a 911 call. We are actually treating all outages now in the Tier 2, Tier 3 areas the same exact way. We're measuring those to make sure we have personnel within the hour. And the last piece is, is continuing with our vegetation management with reducing the risk of trees, doing more aerial patrols to hopefully find those issues before they actually happen. Let's go and go to the next slide. So more about how this works with the, with the new settings is, as you can see on this illustration, you can see that branches hitting that line. The old settings would have took anywhere from a second to around 10 seconds to see that fault. That might allow that piece of branch to, you know, catch on fire. With the new settings that we're putting in here, the more sensitive setting, it'll trip that line within a tenth of a second. The issue we have with this right now, with the settings that we have set up, is it will actually create a larger outage. We have a lot of fuses on our taps that would help minimize the size of the outage. But the problem is, is with these new settings, it's going to, it'll see that fault before the fuses do. And again, some of these outages are going to be in remote areas. It's going to take personnel on foot to patrol. We'll be using helicopters to help restore those lines faster. Some of the other things that we're doing is in the past, we've always had our helicopters dispatched from either Red Bluff or dispatched from Sacramento. We have actually staged helicopters in this region. We've got two helicopters sitting in Yukai at all times. So when these outages do appear, we can respond a lot faster. I'll go to the next slide, Melinda. And this graph here, it just shows the data that we've seen. So as you can see, back when we put the fast trip settings out in July, we've reduced the ignition rate by 50%. And this is the, something that we're really looking into to see, you know, is this going to change the way we look at, you know, future settings with our LRS? We're, we're every day looking at the data that comes in from these LRS, reviewing the faults and try to better understand. Now, there is a total of five circuits that are in the area that have had these settings. It's the Clotik 1101, the Highlands 1103, the Conacta 1102, the Middletown 1101, and I believe the Upper Lake 1101 also that has these settings. But again, this just shows that by us putting the settings in here is we've decreased the ignitions by 50%. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Carl Shaunerfer.
Okay, just getting off mute here. Hopefully everybody can hear me okay. Again, I'm Carl Shaunerfer. I'm the Senior Manager for PG&E's Humboldt Division, which includes Humboldt Lake, Mendocino, and Trinity Counties. And so while our Enhanced Power Line Safety Settings Program, and I may refer that as EPLSS because it's a bit of a tongue twister to repeat that, it does make our system safer for our customers. It may also result, as Ron mentioned, more frequent, longer-duration customer outages as these crews must thoroughly patrol the lines to ensure there's no damage or hazards present, and then perform any necessary repairs before restoring power. And we certainly apologize to our customers who experienced an increased number and/or duration of outages as a result of these additional safety measures. We know that it's a burden to be without power and that's why we're taking this pretty seriously and working very hard to improve communication, which includes providing customer notifications about outages through automated calls, notifying them they are without power, and providing an estimated time of restoration. We're also providing ongoing website updates on outage areas and estimated restoration times. And our media team will also share updated information as it becomes available through social media. And currently, our media team uses Twitter to bring broader awareness to customers. They've identified some issues with using Facebook and Nextdoor, but they're continuing to evaluate additional communication platforms to try and get a broader reach as we're trying to communicate with customers, make them aware of these outages. So in addition, we recently sent communications to all customers potentially impacted by this EPLSS change. We're, we, in these communications, we explain the new process and the potential impacts on them. We sent an email to customers that have an email address on file. And we did that on August 27th. And we also sent a postcard to customers that prefer communications by mail. We did that the first week of September. So as this is a relatively new process, we're continuing to make additional improvements to our internal systems so that they're better coordinating internally so that we can then improve our response times and communicate better externally. But customers can also sign up for alerts and view an outage map by visiting pge.com/outages. So next slide, please. So we're working every day to improve the safety and reliability of our system for our customers and the communities we serve. And on this slide, you can see a list of the circuits with EPLSS settings as well as how many outages that have been experienced so far since we implemented these changes late in July 2021. And as Ron mentioned earlier, we're fine-tuning the sensitivity of these devices, which may result in fewer outages moving forward. Next slide, please. So throughout this year, there have been additional planned and unplanned outages in Lake County. In, in response to your questions about the number of outages and causes, the next two slides here will show all outages in Lake County that occurred between January 1st and September 13th of this year. And as we discuss on the next slide, there are many reasons why customers may experience an outage. So these outages have had a range of impacts from just one customer to over 2,500 customers. And I'm also aware of a follow-up question from Supervisor Pyska to provide data for outages impacting 100 or more customers. And I believe Melinda is following up on that request. So circuits out of the Highland Substation here had larger-than-average customer impacts due to the cash fire. And as always, whenever there's an outage on PG&E electric power line, we do our best to restore power as quickly and as safely as possible. So yeah, go ahead and, next slide, please, Melinda. So we do have a responsibility to our customers to improve the safety of our system. And more than half the outages that we saw on the previous slide were a result of planned work. This work, it's conducted to improve and strengthen our system and reduce wildfire risk. And it may require us to de-energize the power lines to do that safely. So we do this for the safety of our crews, working on the electric lines and the, and the communities in which this is taking place. So I took a closer look at the data this morning, and over 360 of these total outages were for routine maintenance and equipment upgrades. And given that we have 716 distribution miles in Lake County being in high-fire-threat districts, there have been an additional 293 outages to support the maintenance due to our more robust wildfire safety inspections that we're doing and the system hardening improvements that we're making. So substantial portion of those outages are really to improve the safety of the system, particularly for wildfires. This can include, include replacing poles, crossarms, conductor wire, you know, the connectors, all again to make the system safer. So, but we do know losing power is disruptive and, and we'll restore power as quickly and safely as possible. The other on this slide refers to fires, snow, lightning, and in some cases, we have no cause found. That doesn't mean there wasn't a cause. It just may not be evident based on the patrol. You know, in the, in the example Ron provided, if we had a tree branch on a line, it could be that that tree branch caused the system to trip. And then when we go out and patrol, that may have bounced off the line and we wouldn't necessarily know that that was, you know, the cause. So. Next slide, please. All right, so we are taking some steps here to improve. We're fine-tuning the equipment by adjusting the sensitivity settings based on real-world data to avoid unnecessary outages. We're also increasing our system communications to allow the devices to communicate with each other so only small, smaller outages occur. So that's a process we're working through now. And we're also improving the coordination of the restoration patrols to ensure the PG&E team members are in the right place to patrol and restore as quickly as possible after an outage. And as Ron also mentioned, utilizing helicopters as well. Next slide, please. Okay, these Enhanced Power Line Safety Outages, I want to remind you that they're, they're not PSPS events, but we are leveraging some of the customer support programs that we develop for public safety power shut-off. We have resources that customers can take advantage of to help ease the burden of losing power. For example, we have a portable battery program here that provides fully subsidized batteries to low-income medical baseline program customers who live in high-fire-threat districts like Lake County. We also have a generator rebate program that provides up to $1,000 for eligible customers. And I'll go into more detail on that here on the next slide. We also partner with 211 to provide free confidential support and resources during times of critical need. And, and also, you know, in light of the outages impacting Cobb Elementary School in particular, and then, and recognizing the importance that ventilation is in the COVID pandemic, pandemic, excuse me, environment, we made the decision to install an automatic transfer switch and provide a backup generator to help mitigate outage impacts at the school. And I believe the transfer switch has already been installed and we will be hooking up a generator soon if we haven't already done so. So we know these programs don't fully make up for losing power, but we're hopeful that they'll help bring the community some additional support. Next slide. So here, there's more detail on our more recent generator rebate program. Customers qualify for a rebate if they live in a high-fire-threat area, Tier 2 or Tier 3, and either they rely on well water pump for their water needs, or if they are a medical baseline customer who does not qualify for our portable battery program. Or something else we're doing that's new is also essential small business customers like small grocery stores, dental offices, urgent care, et cetera. Through this program, we're offering $300, $500, $1,000 rebates for eligible customers based on the retail product that they purchased for their generator. So also note that eligible customers, it's in So also note that eligible customers, it's a small asterisk here, are also... If we have customers that are participants in our CARE or FARA rate programs, they also receive an additional $200 rebate. And you can learn more about this, and our customers can learn more about this with respect to generators and our battery rebate program at pge.com/backuppower. So I will turn it back over to Melinda.
All right, thank you very much, Carl. This next slide talks about the PG&E reported safety mobile app. So this provides an opportunity for any customer to report and submit photos of non-emergency safety concerns directly to PG&E. By downloading the app, you can take a picture of issues that you see in the community, and PG&E teams will investigate every safety issue that is provided through this mobile app. Once you have the app, you can report an issue by tapping the report button on the app, snapping a photo, and describing the area of concern. So this is something that we just rolled out. I know, I think I just installed it myself a couple of months ago, so we're eager to hear more from our community members as they see any issues in the community. More information and tools to prepare for outages. So there are a variety of wildfire safety tools available online. This includes resources such as address alerts, information available in multiple languages, the weather and public safety power shut-off weather page, the forecasting weather page, preparedness tools, and activities for kids are here at this site. The Safety Action Center and the Backup Power webpage can all be found by visiting pge.com/wildfiresafety. Thank you very much for your time this morning, members of the Board of Supervisors and county staff. If there are any community members who have questions that they don't have the opportunity to ask us this morning during the question and answer session, or if you think of another question you have after this presentation is over, please feel free to call us at 1-866-743-6589, or you can also email us your questions at wildfire safety at pge.com.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes our presentation, and we're now available for any questions.
And is it possible for... Oh, perfect. You read my mind. I wanted to stop the sharing for a second. Thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate the detail and the data provided, but I am 100% sure we have some questions, and let's start with Supervisor Pisca.
I appreciate you coming. I first want to thank you for installing the transfer switch at Cobb School. As we've talked about many times, that is a community that can't be supported by any substation, and having that school lose so much time because of power outages, planned or unplanned, is really disruptive to the students and their families, so I appreciate that. The reason I asked you to come is I was just looking back at the number of outages that we experienced in the month of September. And when I got the data emailed to me earlier, it had real-low average numbers for customers who experienced outages. So I, you know, on September 4th, we had 2,000 people out in Cobb and Middletown with 700 people out in Lower Lake and Cobb on the Connoitee side. On the 7th, we had 2,900 people out. On the 17th, we had 2,080 people out. On the 19th, we had 51 people out, and on the 24th, we had 704 people out. And so, you know, we really need to talk about the sustainability of these outages. While all of us appreciate and are sensitive to wildfires and your equipment being ignition sources, you know, we have to look at this. How can we ask these customers to experience this amount of outages for years more to come? We've been doing this for four years already. So I appreciate that you're here and that you put together this presentation that explains why we're experiencing more of these outages, but we really need to get to the point of how we're going to manage the outages. And I personally don't feel like adding more generators to the mix is the sustainable way forward. We just can't do that. They already pose extreme fire danger threats to our communities to have all of these people running generators. They're toxic to our air, so we need to get to the place where we can have the people that live in these extreme tier zones with backup generation, with batteries. Those are my comments. I'm not sure that I have very many questions at this point because we've had the opportunity to speak, but I wanted to get that out. You know, we did speak earlier on the messaging, and, you know, when we have to answer questions from constituents, they want to know why. And I know that that was one of the things that you were struggling with, is being able to get that why out to our constituents and the residents. And Twitter is not a platform that's used widely throughout Lake County. Facebook is the king here, and so I would really encourage you to figure out how to communicate with your customers via Facebook. More transparency is better. You know, we've been through a lot. This is a very strong community, and they want real answers and they want to know why. And so I think there's room for improvement there. I do appreciate everything that you've been doing. I appreciate that you've been going to the municipal advisory councils and talking directly to the customers via town halls, but I think there's still more room for improvement. So that's... Those are my comments right now. I don't know if anybody else has any.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon.
Yeah. What I would like to see when we talk about data is battery backup opportunities to be taken advantage of here in Lake County for individuals, also the generators. You know, how much data do we have on, you know, who's taking advantage of these programs? Obviously, you know, in Lake County, we have a lot of low-income, a lot of retired folks on set, you know, salaries or set budgets on a monthly basis. And what actually, I know you guys have programs up there, but what has come into Lake County? I'd like to see some of that data for the entire county, not just by district. You can break it down like that, but what has come into folks on wells that have generators or been available with the backup, or medical baseline folks with the backup battery stuff? I'd like to see some more of that data. Maybe you have that, or I missed it, but I didn't see it anywhere in the stuff we got, so I'd like to obviously see that. With the fast-trip sensors or whatever they're called that are starting out, I know it was just implemented. I would have wished that we would have been part of the conversation before that was implemented. I know I wasn't. I don't know if any of the rest of you were contacted. All we know that they started going out, and then we got an explanation. So communication and collaboration, you know, on decisions being made in your guys' boardrooms or, you know, ideas. I think it looks good on paper. We understand why it's happening, but we already know that it's going to intensify the outages. The other question I have on the trip sensors that are going on, this will be the first winter that we're going to go into with it. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but from now on, it's going to be that way whether it's summer or winter, and this will be the first one. And obviously, we're going to hope for a healthy winter, a lot of rain, a lot of wind, if we snow, some other things. You know, how is that going to affect us this winter when it's very cold, you know, and we have a lot of seniors that need their heat and other things, you know? Has that been thought about? And maybe you guys have already had those discussions, but I didn't hear anything about that today in the report, because this will be the first winter that we'll be going through it with these new sensitive trip sensors closing right off the bat and shutting the system down. You know, and then how is that going to affect being able to fly during the winter and inspect the lines? That is a concern of mine going into this winter once again. As we move through, just seeing the numbers and the data there on the outages, 205 in, you know, the Middletown substation. I know some of those were for, you know, work that needed to be done, but a lot of them were outages that just were unknown or whatever. So very concerning, like I said, as we move through that. I know that you guys are looking to work at undergrounding other opportunities, some big announcements made. I think those are long-term strategies that will be obviously worked on by everybody, but, you know, the immediate impact is what we're dealing with, with the phone calls and other stuff. The other thing I would like to hear, because the last time we got an update about outages and stuff, people making claims for lost food, you know, even electronics that burn up during outages and other things. I'd like to see some data on that, that what's coming into county constituents. I know I get calls, me and Jessica get a call definitely from Mr. Mitchell, keeps us on point with PG&E. You know, constant conversations of how do they recover lost food and other equipment or stuff that may be happening? They put in a request, but as it was said one time right here in this boardroom, yeah, you can put in a request, but we'll see what happens. I hope that that's being looked at from a point of reinvesting in the folks that are investing in PG&E and paying a bill every month, that if they lose stuff during these outages, that they're reimbursed for those somehow. I don't know how we track that, but I would like to see an update on that from PG&E. Those are some of the comments, obviously. And then ultimately, myself, and I know this is probably a controversial statement, but on the tree trimming, to me, it doesn't make any sense to cut two feet off a tree and then have to come back and spend more money two years later to do that. If there's opportunities, work with communities, HOAs, the county, in some more robust cutting operations instead of just trimming is just for me, long-term thinking, you know, and a better use of those funds, because every time a contractor has to be called out every other year, that costs money, and they got to get the money from somewhere, and most likely, it's going to be from the ratepayers. Also, just the cleanup during, you know, the tree trimming, tree trimming, a brush, making sure it's taken off in a timely manner. We've had many incidences. I know of myself, and I want to speak for anybody else, but I've got calls of, hey, PG&E came out and trimmed this last year or two years ago, and it's still laying on the ground here, and we're supposed to be clearing fire hazard. So a more robust chipping program and then working with landowners to remove the stuff that does need to be removed if they request it. I understand, being a county official, some folks don't want that or anybody on their property, but we need to... PG&E really needs to increase those opportunities to get things chipped, removed, and off properties that want to have them. Like I said, we've all gone into places. I just placed on, you know, a fire hazard area out on Spruce Grove Road. I was out in the Novaranch area, and there were trees out there that were cut two, three years ago or still on the ground. Try and work with the firewise communities and stuff to get those things reported, but it just needs to be an improvement there to make sure that we're taking care of all the dead and dying trees that are coming down from the fires, but also the ones being removed for the PG&E vegetation programs that you guys are running. So I know it's a lot, probably got a bunch more, but I do appreciate the engagement, and hopefully, you'll be engaging the county with the undergrounding opportunities here in Lake County, and we'll continue to grow on that. That is a long-term project, I think, but there can be some immediate wins because we all know our areas. We have local PG&E folks that will probably help in making those decisions, people that have gone to our schools, lived here all their lives, on what would be the most bang-for-your-buck when you're doing those undergrounding. I think, you know, I'll just put it right out there. I think that Lower Lake Transmission Line and some other things in the area on our side, we had a couple of fires in Hidden Valley, but looking at those things, our opportunities there that I think we could get, like I said, the most bang-for-your-buck to take care of different issues that are happening. We're not going to be able to underground everything, but it's a tool, I think, that's going to help us build more resiliency with the hardening of the wires and everything else that's happening and the sectionalizing. So continued communication is the best thing, and responding to the claims of our constituents in Lake County, I think, is a big issue, and I'd like to see some data put together on all of that, on what's coming back in the county to kind of mitigate these fire issues. And Jessica said it great, we all understand why it's happening, but we've got to make it more realistic for the folks, each and every one of us that have the outages, because we've all experienced them. Nobody has been spared these outages at this point in Lake County. That's all I got.
If I could, I'd like to clarify if I could real quick. You made a comment about, you know, are these settings going to be continued through the winter? They're not, and I apologize not clarifying that through the presentation. These are going to be summer and fall settings only. Once we get out of fire season, we'll be putting the LRs back on their normal settings to allow them to, you know, close in two or fall three times, but we need to first get out of that fire season. I hope I clarified that up for you.
Well, you know, I guess to respond to that, if you ask CAL FIRE, fire season right now is all year round. So that's why I made the comment. I appreciate that you guys are thinking that. So what, on what date? What triggers that? What triggers it? What date are you guys thinking?
There's not a date. It's all about conditions. Like you said, you know, we have a meteorology team that's be looking at the fuels, they'll be looking at the moistures on the ground level, and once it hits a certain percentage, I don't know what the percentage is, but once it hits that certain percentage, then we'll be considered out of fire season for PG&E, and we'll be turning the settings back to normal. The other thing too, that I want to kind of clarify too, is when we first set these settings on the high trip or the fast trip, it was taken out the substations. It was taken out a very large area. And what we've done now is we went back to these line reclosures that have these sensors to where they're going to be able to communicate again, to where at least the outage will be brought down to just a zone, to where most of these outages, instead of you seeing 2,000 customers, it's going to be around 500 customers, which I still, is not a great scenario, but at least it's a lot better than what we were seeing in early September and actually in August also. So, and I believe at this time, all those settings are in Lake County now on all five of those circuits. So again, we should be seeing a lower customer count, which will actually help reduce the area that we have to patrol to get people back on faster.
Thank you for that. I do want to clarify, and I kind of want to check in with Supervisor Simon. I think when he mentioned the wintertime was because of how cold it gets getting into fall, where higher elevations, and so the issue of turning off power when in late October, early November, which we have experienced PSPS conditions before at that time, that it can get really cold in a household where there's no access to heat, if there's no access to electricity. I think that's what you were alluding to in that. So not necessarily a specific season, but just a condition in the weather outside. It might be dry, but it might also still be cold. And that becomes an issue for your clients to deal with and our constituents to deal with, because those are kind of contradicting situations where you're kind of requested to have energy in order to find the heat.
Well, that goes for the heat waves when we have a PSPS or outage in the middle of summer, and then we have the outages in late fall or the middle of winter, and we have vulnerable residents who can't... There's no way for them to cool down, and there's no way for them to stay warm.
Any further comments or questions? So I did want to... I do have some things on my list here, and I appreciate you being here today and providing a presentation and hearing us out as to what our concerns for the community is, but I want to start off with, you are overseen by the CPUC, and I want to start off with one of the CPUC's mission and goals. And it says that they are dedicated to ensuring that we have safe, reliable utility service at reasonable rates. So I think that we're very focused on the safe because of past history, and it's just a difficult task to deal with the circumstances of extreme weather and extreme heat, extreme dryness, and that sparks can easily start a fire these days. But it's the reliable part that I really want to focus on today, because turning it off to be safe makes it unreliable as a service. And so you showed some data that says that the majority of the outages was planned work. What are you working on so that you can do that work but continue electricity? Is there generators that you can bring along with your team so that it can generate enough electricity to continue feeding whoever's down the line? Is there redundancies that you can create so you can work on some of the poles and some of the lines and not have to shut off power? This is all created by you, not by the weather and safety reasons. How can you implement something better so that you don't have to turn off the power to be able to do some of the work you're doing? If you can reduce that 67% planned electrical outages, then I think that right there already, we're doing a whole lot better. When it comes to weather, I think there's some unpredictable situations to deal with that can be understood as to why it's easier to just, or safer to just turn off the power, but if it's planned, how can we plan better? How can your teams be better equipped so that we don't have to turn off the power? The undergrounding of wires, I think, is probably one of the most important things. We recognize here in the county where the majority of these PSPSs occur. I haven't received any guidelines. I know I've spoke with Melinda. I haven't received any guidelines, I know I've spoke with, with Melinda before about this. But knowing our history with fires, knowing our history with PSPS, what do we need to do to be best positioned to be on this list? Like I saw Alameda on the list of potential counties that might receive funding for underground wires. And no offense to Alameda, but they are nowhere close to as rural as we are. And our need to reduce the fire threat so that we don't have to have our electricity turned off, in my opinion, granted, it's a biased opinion, is much higher than in some of those places that were listed in the counties that were listed in there. So what can we do to be best positioned so that we don't end up? And, and this has nothing to do with you, in the state of California, there's a rural urban issue where we end up last as far as getting access to some of the funds that we need to provide the safety and services that our community requires. I want to make sure we don't end up last where counties in the Bay Area get access to these funds and we get whatever crumbs are left over. And so I'm hoping that you can provide those details so that we can be best positioned and ready to jump on these projects. I also would like to see a, so there's, there's one thing that I know I can't say anything negative at all about PG&E when it comes to fire recovery. For example, the cash fire, the fire is almost still going and you're in there rebuilding your infrastructure. You, you have your little army that you bring in and they do a fabulous job. Those, those blue trucks are such a positive thing in our community to see. We know what's going on, they're fixing something, they're rebuilding something. And it's appreciated because fires can be absolutely traumatic. And any kind of respite from the trauma is, is better. But we always rebuild exactly what we had, because that's the easy way. At what point can we have plans engineered to do underground wiring? So that when we're in a state of emergency, we can make it happen when we do the rebuild. We, we, we know that you can bulldoze right through people's yards and right through trees and right through everything. Why can't we do the same thing with building underground wiring? If we're going to rebuild an area that just got burnt, how simple would it be to do the same process as bulldozing and everything else? To say, okay, instead of putting poles back up where it could be a potential issue in the future, here's a plan that we've already devised, now go ahead and just start putting in the conduit and put the lines underground rather than rebuilding exactly that, what we know ends up being an issue that we end up turning off because it's liable to get hit by trees. So I, I think that we're not preparing ourselves for those types of things. We're just doing it because it's what we've done and it's the easy way out. But we have to figure out how to get these plans done and put on the shelf. That way, when they need to be pulled, we're ready for it. And then we actually make change in that community rather than recreate the same potential hazard in that community. The generator rebate, it's, it's, I appreciate the effort. But at the same time, you're, you're running against the clock. We have AB 1346 sitting on the governor's desk, I believe it's still sitting there. I don't believe it's been signed, where eventually generators will be banned in the state of California. And let's not go off on that topic. But the fact is, just as Supervisor Pyska said, it's an added potential hazard in the community. And then it's not even going to be something that, that, that can happen in the future. We have to really focus on the battery backup process. It's a much easier connection to make. It connects directly to PG&E, so when the power's on, the batteries get recharged. Generators need to be refilled. And if we're talking about elderly, if we're talking about medically fragile, those people don't have the same mobile ability as everyone else who has better capabilities to move around. And so refilling their generators becomes a problem. And my issue that I bring up continuously is, living in a rural area, the amount of pumps for water is absolutely crucial. And, and those people are required pretty much to have some kind of backup energy source. But again, not everybody has access or the capability to get that alternative source. And just, I, I was listening to Supervisor Simon discussing tree trimming. The previous, and I don't know if it still is, the previous way to trim a tree made our trees look ridiculous. So you'd have like a big U in the middle of a tree because, hey, it's three or four feet away from the wires. But now, because there's the possibility of a branch falling off and hitting the wires, I think we need to get away from partially trimming and, and maybe like Supervisor Simon was saying, think a little bit more long-term. Maybe we need to look at completely getting rid of a tree and replanting other trees in different places where they're not near the lines. Because these trees just keep coming back, coming back, coming back. And, and they're, they're obviously a problem because that's part of the reason that you're turning off our electricity. I know I, I, you, you, you shared some positives of 50% ignition rate decrease. But unfortunately, that also meant an increase in potential power outages because that's how you get rid of the ignition rate possibility. We need to work on the reliability of the service. And I've provided some ideas and examples of things we can focus on. And I really hope that you can work with us to make sure that we are going to be at the top of the list to get some of these underground electrical wires. And I'm, I'm just going to speak for other people's district, between Middletown and Cobb, those two areas almost seem always to be in the dark. And so if we can just focus on a small area, it's got to be possible to make those wires underground. We have to make it happen. We can't continue, we're in a world where we're changing to remote work from home, and yet your home may not have power. It's easier for a business to figure out how to do these things and operate and pay for the equipment. But on an individual's home, it makes it that much more difficult. And we, we have a changing world, and at the same time, we have kind of stepping back policies on how to make things safer. And I think we have to try to balance that out in a better way. So I'm going to stop right there, appreciate the conversation, appreciate the comments also made by my colleagues. And I will open it back up for anyone else who wants to follow up or opening it for the public. Supervisor Simon?
One final comment, and don't want it to go missed here. You know, obviously, as we are still in the midst of the pandemic, you know, in the fires and devastation we've had over the last six years here in Lake County, you know, every one of these outages just is, is one more obstacle for our businesses to thrive. And that's a huge, huge disadvantage, you know, at this point in Lake County. So, you know, the business community is suffering also. I know a lot of them have gone out and purchased and tried to do what they can, but some of them are still unable to do that. So, you know, it's just one more thing that our business community is having to deal with. And I know you hear that from all over in all the regions. But here in Lake County, it just, I can't, you know, really express how devastating it can be, especially to our Cobb Mountain businesses, the Middletown area, but throughout the county, all over, the folks can't afford it. They're just struggling to keep the doors open right now. And every time it's, you know, there's an outage, that just is a loss of revenue. So that's something else to consider too, from PG&E's standpoint.
And I, I do want to add one more thing, because I feel I was very negative, I want to provide something positive. When we first experienced PSPS, it was pretty much countywide. It has absolutely changed in the scope of what a PSPS looks like. Unfortunately, it seems that the usual suspects have to feel the brunt of a PSPS. And I'd love to see us work together to make sure we can decrease that, 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 that blow if we can. So thank you for changing the scope and minimalizing as much as you can. Let's keep trying and keep going further. And with that, let's go ahead and open it up for the public, and we have a couple of hands up. Let's go ahead and start with Julia Bono.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, excellent. As you mentioned, my name is Julia Bono. I've lived in places where all power and utility lines were placed underground before moving to Lake County where they're not. Not only is this underground wiring practice vastly preferable from an aesthetic point of view, so that we could better enjoy our natural scenery in Lake County without ugly power lines, poles and damaged or removed trees. But it notably reduces the chances of outage, outages, is far more fire and windproof and virtually eliminates the annual cost of tree trimming to prevent them from interfering with above-ground power and utility lines. I think the trees are less of an issue than the highly problematic overground wiring practice. And removing trees creates substantial environmental and aesthetic damage. I therefore ask the county and its utility providers to strongly consider making the investment involved to put all utility lines underground in Lake County, especially in places like Middletown that have been impacted by wildfires and PSPS power outages. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is phone 6205.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. First of all, I want to bring everyone's attention to the large amount of generators that have been sitting for months now at this PG&E substation at Kits Corner. We've been attempting to find out what those generators are available for. We don't see them moving and being used in other areas of the county that have needs. I don't understand that. I'd like to make sure that you, the supervisors, are aware of what I'm talking about and perhaps can get better answers from PG&E. I also am a part of a group of people who was in an area where the PSPS, the last outage we had, was made in less than eight hours of notice. Also, I'm with a group of people who attempt to actually locate the benefits and the resources that PG&E keeps saying is available. We make the phone calls, we track the sources, we can't find them. And that goes for battery, batteries, food replacement, taxis, hotels, and customer resource centers. The bringing of the need for this county to have to use generators with propane with our large population of elderly and low income is such a tinderbox. It is crazy to bring that into Lake County. And with the recent revelations of your company's responsibility for the Dixie Fire, you have us in this absolutely horrendous position of having to worry about, are you going to kill us? Are you going to start our county on fire? And it'll be the time when the conflagration can't be stopped? You have to do better than you're doing. The public outreach that you say is in place is not reaching the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And just kind of do want to pivot back to PG&E and see if you have a response or if it's possible to provide a response as far as those generators at the Kits Corner area? And maybe you need to look into it and provide that response to us via email, and then we can get back to our constituents.
Hi Chairman Sabatier. I, I can defer to Ron or Carl as well, but those generators, I believe that the, that the community member is referring to, that is for temp gen at the Conocti substation, which is very close to Kits Corner. So we do have three substations, the Hartley Substation, Conocti and Clearlake Substation. And of course, the Clearlake Substation is not located in the city of Clearlake, but it's, it's over there south of Lakeport. So those three substations do have temp gen that we have staged at those three substations. And so we have temporary generation available to use there during PSPS events. If it's, if, if it is safe to do so, if the weather conditions permit. I didn't have that slide in the slide deck this morning, so I apologize. I know we've presented on that before, but if you have any questions, if you need me to provide additional detail in writing, I can provide that as well. But those, we do have generators staged at those three substations at Conocti, Hartley and Clearlake.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I'll just follow up on that, Melinda, and explain, so there's a difference between distribution lines and transmission lines. And there may be areas where we can serve customers out of a substation, but we can't get power to that substation because of the transmission line might be in scope for a PSPS event. So if we have generations staged at those substations, then it allows us the opportunity to then provide power to our customers through that substation out through those distribution circuits that are not currently in scope for a power, for a power outage.
Thank you very much. Next comment, Kathy McCarthy.
Hi, this is Kathy McCarthy, and I just wanted to first echo about the hardship it is on our older population and those who try to serve them during these PSPSs. And not only just the frustration of putting together a generator, you know, in the dark, but also it creates trip hazards in their house, you're trying to be careful with extension cords to lamps and that sort of thing. So it's, it's very near and dear to my heart that these can be avoided. But also, I live in a neighborhood that was, was destroyed in the valley fire. And about 18 months ago or so, we were part of a program with taller power poles and this more thickly insulated wire as part of that power program, or sorry, pilot program. So my question is, when it comes to time to talk about putting things underground, are neighborhoods like mine going to be overlooked because we're already part of this pilot program? Or are we still on the table to be considered? That's all.
Thank you very much. And if PG&E would like to respond to that?
I'll go ahead and jump in on that. It's a great question, and it's still, we're still going through the process of how we're going to go after the undergrounding and where we're going to start. But that, that would be one of the considerations too, if a line was already hardened like the line you're describing, would that still maybe be considered on the top of list or would it be maybe moved down? At this time, we do not have the answer to that.
I think that we'll probably need to follow up on a larger discussion on those items as well to get some deeper detail. And next question or comment is from phone 6205.
Yes, I don't know if anybody has addressed the loss of cell phone, phone services in PSPS outages and the loss of 911. And that our county is now working with an evacuation system that relies on the internet functioning and being able to be accessed. That is part of our overall evacuation plan for the county. But every PSPS has large areas where the cell service, the, the phone service, the internet service is simply blacked out. And we can never know ahead of time how to deal with it. As far as I know of, there is no legislation that's been successfully made that requires that the internet companies and the cell companies have generator backup for their towers. But where is the responsibility of PG&E? Where's the conscience of PG&E to make sure that we, the people, can maintain our emergency notification? It isn't acceptable what has gone on.
And thank you very much for your comment, wondering if PG&E staff have a comment to make on that? Or a response as far as what might be happening, what laws are in play or anything of the kind?
Hi Chairman Sabatier, and thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get the caller's name. But I'm happy to look into that and see what legislation has passed regarding our telecommunications partners and battery backup at the cell phone towers. I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me this morning. So I can provide that to county staff after I investigate that. Thank you for the question.
And just putting out my opinion that while, yes, there is a collaborative cooperation between PG&E serving these towers. between P G and E serving these towers, I do believe that some of that responsibility needs to lay on those who have the towers where they should have backup generation as most do these days. And I know there was, I believe there was a bill to extending the amount of hours that that generation needed to be provided for. But it's a matter of if the upgrades have been met and also if it's a new tower that's been installed. But we do have to place some of that responsibility, if not a larger portion of that responsibility, on the people who choose to have towers in places where service unfortunately doesn't always happen. So, but it would be nice if we can do something together. I see no further hands up. I want to bring it back to the board, and we do have a hand in the boardroom. So let's go ahead and make that happen.
I want to say a word for an 85-year-old man who is going to grieve when Loggers Unlimited cut down a huge oak. It hurts our hearts to have so many trees cut down. And I think I had my life written this morning, something maybe turned over to the right side of the road, and here comes Loggers Unlimited. I don't even think he saw me. He was in the middle of a very narrow road that I live on. So I am going to write you a complaint, P G and E, about Loggers Unlimited. I've heard two or three different complaints, and I have one from this morning. They are not polite. They are not professional. And if you argue with them about a tree, they will back down and not cut it down. Trees do make oxygen. And our trees are going. People are cutting them down. It's very sad. People grieve for trees like they grieve for people when Loggers Unlimited cuts down the trees for P G and E. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that's it for public comment. Are there any further questions or comments from board members? So I do know that, I appreciate the conversation, and we've hit on a couple of different topics, provided some suggestions, looked at to receive some more data, wondering if, are we going to be receiving that via email? Would you like to come back and provide some of that information so we can continue the discussion? I think that we'll figure that out, but I'm hopeful that you got those questions and those requests down so that we can make sure to follow up on that and then figure out how we will meet again.
Yeah, thank you so much again, Chairman Sabatier and everyone on the Board of Supervisors and county staff. I have been taking notes, and so I will be following up and I'll work with the County Administrator Office to determine, in addition to any written replies, how else the county would like us to follow up. So thank you again for your time this morning. We really appreciate you allowing us to come and present with you.
Okay, and thank you very much for coming. And just from my behalf, I know that our frustration is with the company as a whole, not with the individuals representing the company here today. Thank you so much for being here to not only present but also listen to us and also respond to what you can respond to at this moment in time and looking forward for the conversation to continue. Okay, let's see, it's twelve oh four. Are we still on for 1:00 P. M. or do we have a different timeframe?
Hi, I'm waiting for the, to hear back on that. My hope would be that maybe we could push it to 1:30. But I don't have an answer for you yet.
Okay.
I might suggest you take up six point one five. You could probably do six point one four later in the day.
I'm thinking we can probably do both. In fact, I'd love to do, I think we could do both. The one five is important, but at the same time, I know the gentleman left the room, so I'm not sure if he went somewhere else. But we will go ahead and push forward, and hopefully it won't be a 30-minute lunch. But if it is, I guess that's what we have to do at this moment in time. So let's go ahead and continue on with six point one four, our 11:15 A. M. A, waive formal bidding process pursuant to section two dash thirty eight point two of the county purchasing ordinance due to the unique goods and services. And B, approve a two-year lease of 19 automated license plate reader cameras from Flock Group Incorporated, 1170 Howell Mill Road, Northwest Suite 210, Atlanta, Georgia, 30318, in an amount not to exceed $52,250 for year one and $47,500 for year two, and authorize the chair to sign. Vice Chair Crandall.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sabatier. And I first want to acknowledge the fact that without the cannabis funds, I wouldn't be bringing this forward. So that's a real great benefit to be able to utilize that discretionary fund to try and, you know, bring this forward. And I also want to thank Carol and administrative staff and Anita for overview of the legal information, of course, and also the sheriff for his, he's brought forward the same type of contract and used the same group as has Clearlake. The police, the police, Clearlake Police Force uses the same camera system. This was brought to me because of the Nice Neighborhood Watch Group. They were, they live in a neighborhood where there's a lot of heavy meth activity, and they're struggling with a lot of problems in that neighborhood area. So we would meet weekly, and after a while, they got me in touch with the Flock representative who was tied in, and I was able to start moving forward and look at these options. Another great thing about this is that it's, we're hoping to put them all throughout my district in order to deter dumping. And that's one of the biggest things that the people noticed in the Nice Neighborhood Watch was that some of the cars that were in their neighborhood that were being brought in to be fixed were, they would end up being dumped. And so we know that with this Flock Group, and I think the sheriff explained it in his last, when he brought this forward, is that these read license plates and they give real-time dispatch type of information. For example, if there's a white Nissan going eastbound, it will go straight to dispatch and do that. And I know from the surveillance industry and gaming, that's part of the biggest problem, especially with people in Spring Valley and Nice who've brought all their camera information to the sheriff and say, look, this is what happened. I've seen someone do an illegal drug deal. I've seen someone steal this. But they don't have the staff to go through all of that footage. And that was the biggest problem that we have in the gaming industry is you have to assign someone to do that work. With this, it gives somewhat of a faster response when it comes to vehicle license plate reading and different cars and different, you know, different vehicles going forward. And so we want to deter, we know this isn't a silver bullet, but we want to deter dumping, of course, garbage dumping because it happens in frequent areas. And we want to also deter cars being, you know, left on the side of the road. I know we've been dealing with it quite frequently on Highway 20, RVs, trailers, all of those different things. And so we're hoping to lessen that in the meantime, because there's a lot of things, you know, a lot of the community likes to say about, we need the law enforcement to do X, Y, and Z. Well, this is giving them the tools they need to be able to do more of their job until we can get some more people hired and retained. So I can keep going on about this because I really feel strongly about it, but I don't know if the sheriff's here and he wants to add or anything of that nature, if there's anyone else anyone wants to add, but.
The sheriff was not able to make it today.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation and the item. Any comments or questions from board members? And so I know in our previous conversations, this is a unique service for the solar panel, the cell process, and the artificial intelligence software. And so I know that's why we approved it for the sheriff, and I also know that's why it was approved over at the P D over in the city of Clearlake. And it doesn't quite say that it's the only one available on there, but I know that with further discussions, it is correct. And I just had a question for you specifically. Are you providing the, and it's out of curiosity, are you providing the $99,750 upfront or is it $52,000 out of this year and then next year it'll be out of the other hundred?
It's $52,000 this year and next year, from what I understand.
Okay, perfect. And as far as I'm concerned, whether we have staffing or not, this is still a huge benefit. This is artificial intelligence that works for us, provides eyes and ears for where we are not able to be, and I think that it just complements what we have, and I don't think it needs to, I hope it doesn't go away in the future unless it's not working for us. But I think this has worked tremendously well in the city of Clearlake, continues to work tremendously well, and they've expanded also from their original eight or nine, now they have something like 25 cameras out around the city. So I think this will definitely benefit your district and emit support of this. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, just to follow along on that line, Supervisor Crandall, I'd like to see if you'd come back, you know, once it's installed and give us maybe a six-month or a yearly update on the impact that it is having, because, you know, as you said, it is happening a little bit in the area, but anything that we can do to help create the safety and, just as you said, illegal dumping, dumping of abandoned vehicles and other issues that are currently going on that we're working to get a hold of and really make some change. I'd appreciate that, but just an update would be greatly appreciated to the board, six months or a year, depending on what it is.
I think we'd do six months, just to make sure, because I really, I really would like to see the, you know, it work. And so I think with keeping, with keeping that on to come back in six months and see how it's deterred or if it's even making a difference. That's another person I forgot to thank was Scott DeLeon for working on with me with the roads and the permits for those type of things, because if it doesn't work in a specific area, there's a license, a license that I can move to a different area or something of that nature when it comes to putting the cameras in specific spots. So that was another person that helped me out, so.
Nice.
And this came very fast. I mean, I know that the folks in the Nice Neighborhood Watch were upset, like, what's taking so long? But on this other end, you know, waiving it is bringing it even faster. This is a real, this is a real streamlined process that took place, and so I'm really grateful for that as well. So I just wanted to add that.
And another question, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Scott.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I think this is a great use of these funds, is what these funds are there for, and I would love an update also, because we might want to use our funds to be able to do the same thing in our district, so we know we have illegal dumping or issues that we can maybe, you know, tag team and get on the system.
Right.
Absolutely. Just curious, and I know that there's a purpose for why it doesn't show a map for where they are, but my question for you is, do you have a spot for all 19, all ready to go?
They're already set.
Okay.
And the other thing is, is that the sheriff, he has this information. I also wanted to, I had to clear it with him. And, oh, of course, Lieutenant Pollock was a big part of it because he was the main person in charge of putting theirs together. So they know exactly where and they ensured that they didn't conflict. The other thing is, is I also talked with Commander, Commander Fanzler from C H P to make sure he, he and the sheriff both have access so that they could see in real time what's going on as well, because it makes no sense to just, I was also, the last thing I wanted to make sure was, I don't know if it's, if there's a legality issue with me giving the access to the other supervisors as well to be able to see, because they give you like a website that you can go on and look. I have no problem giving them access as well, just to, just to be able to have real-time information, but that may be something we have to look at in the future, you know.
I have a question. Is the surveillance footage, is it considered evidence?
I think, I think it is. I think it's worked as evidence in different areas, and that's, that's one of the biggest reasons this group brought it forward, is they've seen it happen in different, like, parts of the United States where they, it's brought down crime so much because of this information, so.
Yeah, and they hold on to all that in their own storage. It's part of the process of paying for the annual fee, which is great. Love it. If there's nothing further, let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the public? And seeing none, let's bring it back.
All right, Mr. Chair. I'd like to motion to waive formal bidding process pursuant to section two dash thirty eight point two of the county purchasing ordinance due to the unique goods and services.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crandall, and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve a two-year lease for 19 automated license plate reader cameras from Flock Group Incorporated, 1170 Howell Mill Road, Northwest Suite 210, Atlanta, Georgia, 30318, in the amount not to exceed $52,250 for year one and $47,500 for year two, and authorize the chair to sign. Also, coming back in six months with a report to determine how effective this is.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Crandall and a second from Supervisor Scott. Roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Okay, we'll make this one quick. Okay, let's move on to item six point one five, our 11:30 A. M. item, consideration of county investment policy. And C. A. O. Hutchinson, this is your item.
It is, and Patrick Sullivan is also in the room. I want to introduce him. He's going to just give a really quick overview of how we got to this point, and I want to invite Carlos to come on up. Carlos, if you'd like to, if you'd like to have a seat there in front of the board, probably on the far side, because there's less stuff going to be in your way. So Patrick, go ahead, give us the background.
All right, good afternoon. So on July 21st, your board approved an agreement with Chandler Asset Management to provide investment advisory and management services for the county. Since then, Chandler has worked with the Treasury Tax Collector Committee, with both administrative staff and treasury staff, putting together documents they needed to conduct their analysis. Chandler has done two major things here. They have revised our investment policy for the county to ensure compliance and create the framework we need to create our actual investment program. Second thing they've done is they have conducted an extensive cash flow analysis to help guide them in creating the appropriate investment strategy for the county, for the recommendation they're crafting for your board. So at this time, Carlos LePita from Chandler is here, and he's able to present on both of these and answer any questions your board may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, board members. So I want to, in addition to the cash flow analysis, extensive cash flow analysis that we did, we also, and also the update of the investment policy, we also conducted a strategy session to actually, through an iterative process, identify an appropriate strategy, investment strategy to be able to implement and go forward with. So that was the work that was done, not just for my firm, but also in conjunction with a committee that's part of this board and the Treasury Tax Collector. So those are in place. Today, I want to, I want to present to you the investment policy statement. The policy is meant to be a guide and a ruling document for your investment program. We spent time making sure that the policy was up to date in terms of including the latest changes to California Government Code, those statutes that govern the investment of public funds. We also made sure that we included best practices as defined by the California Municipal Treasurers Association, the Government Finance Officers Association, and the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada. So it was a large endeavor. It, I think it went from five to like 12 or 15 pages. So all of the precepts that are in there are meant to provide very clear and unambiguous guidance about what can be done and cannot be done in the investment program. We solicited feedback from the committee, and the document before you is the final work of that endeavor. So may I answer any questions on it from anyone?
Thank you very much for that, and it was great working with you. I learned that I have no knowledge whatsoever on money and investment, but I learned a lot and did my best to follow up with your requests and appreciate the work from the committee as well in getting this accomplished and brought to the board for today, and definitely want to thank Patrick Sullivan also for his work on this. Any comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Simon.
I just want to thank the investment, or the committee, for working on bringing this to us, you know, obviously maximizing everything in the county coffers is very important. And I know when I was on the committee in the very beginning, when we set this ad hoc committee up, this was one of the big ticket items that was to be brought back to the board. So I want to thank the committee for the work, Carol, and everybody who was involved in bringing this here. This is only going to be a benefit to our employees and everybody here in Lake County, so appreciate the opportunity to work together, but this is, this is a big step forward. This is one more of those things as, you know, we took some steps this morning, but this is just another, you know, cog in the wheel here to really advance Lake County. So thank you very much for the hard work. I'm in support, obviously.
And I'm going to segue with what you just said, that we started with something this morning, just in our conversations, and correct me if I'm wrong with the numbers, but we had something like $295 million that are possible to invest, and I believe we were investing approximately at an average of about $50 million for the past few years. Am I correct on those numbers?
Supervisor Sabatier, based on the analysis... Supervisor Sabatier, based on the analysis that we conducted, that, those are approximate numbers. That's correct. Obviously, when we start to develop the, the investment, we're going to want to do that in steps because the markets are very volatile. In fact, this very morning, interest rates moved around considerably, much more than they have in the past six months. And interest rates are expected to rise. And we want to be very careful as we place those investments that we don't tie the money up in longer investments immediately while they end up rising in the next few weeks. So we want to be able to, for lack of a better term, dollar cost our, average our way into the market. So we're going to be very cognizant in doing that, very deliberate, and it's going to take some time. So it may look like that smaller portfolio for some time based on the numbers that you gave, but eventually it will build up to the number, to the larger figure that you stated. Yes.
Right. And just imagining if we had been in the last 10 years where we've been seeing some pretty good investing possibilities, if that had been invested in there, what would the outcomes be for us? It could be small, it could be large, but it would be greater than what we were receiving already. And granted, this is for our schools, this is for fire districts, and this is for us as well. This is, this is a part of, as you just stated from this morning, this is to create better revenue streams, to make sure that we are maximizing what we're doing. And I, I think this is a great step. Couldn't agree more. Anything further before we open it up for the public? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Looking in the Zoom room because we seem to have lost our public in the boardroom. And bringing it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the county investment policy.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking your time to be with us today.
I need to.
There's a B.
There's a B?
Yes.
Oh, goodness gracious, the directive.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I, I move that we approve the management directive and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Pyska and a second by Supervisor Simon. I apologize, I was hungry and was thinking about lunch. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Supervisors.
And with that, we're going to take a lunch. We are going to take a little less than an hour. We're going to reconvene in closed session at one fifteen PM. And in closed session, let me just read out what we have. Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five seven B, A, interview as a public health officer, B, appointment of public health officer, and eight point two, public employee evaluation, title Director, Health Services Director. I believe that I can say that we will be back for public session by two forty-five?
Yes, the, the Zoom meeting that you'll join at one fifteen.
Mike, please.
Sorry about that. The Zoom meeting that you're returning to for closed session at one fifteen is a separate Zoom. It's not a part of the one we're using right now. And I would estimate that we would return to the board chambers to continue this meeting in person and in Zoom at approximately two thirty PM.
Okay, let's go ahead and say two forty-five just in case. And there isn't all that much left in the other items so that we will get that accomplished by a good time.
Sounds good.
Don't, don't jinx me. Don't jinx me. I was, I was feeling good about that. So we will reconvene at one fifteen and close, and come back and open at two forty-five. Thank you very much. And apologize for the long time for getting back to you. We told you two forty-five. It is three twenty-four. Just had some technical difficulties and a longer than anticipated closed session. But we are back and we are going to continue on item seven point two, consideration of new resolution urging the California Citizens' Redistricting Commission to rejoin all of Lake County with neighboring contiguous counties of Napa and Sonoma within the same United States Congressional District. So I brought this to your board. We had already submitted a, a resolution requesting to stay within the district with Napa and Sonoma. However, in the past, we know that we have been before entirely within the Napa and Sonoma Congressional District. What has happened is we have lost a congressional district within the state as well. And so there's going to be some pretty large changes in comparison to if we stayed steady at the same number of congressional districts. I feel that Napa and Sonoma are, I, I, I'm going to say things that I may regret. They carry a certain level of weight when it comes to the entire state and the entire federal government. And we want to take advantage of that weight that they carry. I don't mean to speak in negative terms towards other neighbors, but Colusa County and others do not carry that same level of weight. I think that we can get more advantages by joining Napa and Sonoma. Again, in the past, we used to be that way. When you look at the way that we have our services, our fire, it's Lake, Napa, Sonoma. If you look at the way that we commute every single day to go to work, typically most people go over the mountain to go west or south. Not many people or as many people go over the east. We have more common connections with the areas represented by, in that district with Napa and Sonoma than we do in others to the east. It would be nice to all be able to communicate with the same congressional districts. And I just think that it would allow us to have some advantages as we move forward. This is a, again, a letter that is, we're looking to do a new resolution, not an amended resolution. Spoke with Congressman Thompson's office about this. This would be the preferred way to go. And similarities to this same letter also came out from the City of Clear Lake's meeting that I believe happened on the, was that the fourteenth, the sixteenth of September. And agreeing with that perspective and would, and wanting to go back to what we used to have prior to 2010 when we were split, offering this resolution to the board and opening up for discussion. Any comments or questions from board members? Okay. And seeing none. And I did work quite a bit with CAO Hutchinson. I want to make sure if she wanted to say a few words, that she has the capability to do so.
I don't have.
And your microphone, please.
I don't have any particular comments, although I did communicate with Congressman Thompson's office last night and shared with them the resolution as proposed and got feedback that, that it looked great from their perspective. But I wanted to make sure your board is mindful of the fact that you do have some ecomments on this item. So as long as you saw those.
Yes, we, I believe we got two or three of those.
Two or three, that is correct.
Yeah. And those came in all before last night or as of this morning. And no more has come in during the day?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Just those.
And so, yes Supervisor Scott?
I do have a question. I think we do benefit right now having two congressional leaders representing Lake County. So are you thinking that we're either going to be lumped into Napa County or the other direction we would probably lose having two congressional leaders in our county?
I think that right now with one loss of a congressional district, there's going to be some pretty major movements in comparison to what we've seen in the past. And just looking to make sure that we align ourselves with what we think would be the most advantageous of positions.
And I think I, I agree with you. I think that we would benefit by having continued representation with the, with the Napa County. I think we do definitely benefit from that.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any public comments on this item? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven point three, consideration of A, special meeting dates of December second and December ninth, 2021, or any other dates of your board's choosing, to be added to the Board of Supervisors' annual calendar for 2021 for department head evaluations. And B, removal of special meeting date of November eighteenth, 2021 from the Board of Supervisors' annual calendar for 2021. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start by saying thanks to Carolyn Purdy who helped put this agenda item together. So we are needing a total of four half-day sessions with your board during which you would spend a block of time doing department head evaluations. And of the three that you selected recently, we later discovered that November eighteenth is probably not a good one of those three because the planning commission also meets in the board chambers that day. And we would hate to assume that, that they would be done by one and not have that happen. So our recommendation is to take that one off your calendar and add two more. So we have a total of four. And originally, we were focused on Thursdays, although it doesn't have to be a Thursday. If it's going to be a Thursday, the next two that we could foresee as possibles would be December second and December ninth. But if you don't want to focus on a Thursday, if you'd like to look at Fridays, for example, other possible dates, and, and we're talking about an afternoon session of from one to five PM. So other possible dates would be October twenty-ninth, November fifth. Okay, not October twenty-ninth. November fifth or November nineteenth. Or any day you want as well. So, so right now the dates in play are November fifth, November nineteenth, December second, December ninth, or any other day y'all want to suggest, but we need two.
The Thursdays work best for me.
I, I, I'm willing to make anything happen, but on the second of December, I have a CSAC board meeting that I need to be a part of. And so that's the only date that doesn't work. But the fifth, the nineteenth, or the ninth all work for me.
Yeah, I think I'm good too. Just need to get them all added to the calendar.
Yeah. So December ninth looks good for?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody. So December second is out due to Bruno's conflict. But December ninth sounds good. And then one more. I, I hate to go any, like if we're going to focus on Thursdays, I hate to go any later than December ninth because then you're pressing up against the holidays, which always seem to have lots of other challenges. So could we look at a Friday for one of the dates, either the fifth or nineteenth of November?
I like the fifth.
Yeah. And I'm looking at Supervisor Scott for which one might be easiest?
Both are bad, but I can make it work.
Both are bad. So it sounds like November fifth is the preference for everybody at this moment in time.
What time is it on the fifth?
Well, we have been talking about doing all of these at one PM, but on the fifth it, it could be eight AM if that would be easier for Supervisor Scott.
Earlier morning would be better for me on that day.
I'm good.
Remember, these, these are intended to be in person and with all five of you here in the chambers.
In the morning is easier for me.
Yeah, if we could do nine o'clock just because of my drop off for schools.
Nine to one on the fifth?
That would, that would be good.
Nine, nine AM on the fifth?
Okay, so then on December ninth, is your preference one PM or nine AM?
Either or at this moment.
Anybody care?
Anybody care?
The afternoons are better on the Thursdays.
Okay.
Typically.
So December ninth, one PM to five PM. November fifth, nine AM to one PM.
Sounds good.
And once this has been memorialized, when this is completed, is it possible to send us calendar invites to make sure this gets placed into our calendars?
For all four of them or just these new ones?
All four of them if possible. Sorry to sound lazy, but it just, it really helps.
Will do.
Yeah.
Okay, so then it looks like what you're approving is November fifth from nine to one and December ninth from one to five.
Correct.
Yes, okay. All right, if someone would make a motion to that effect.
Okay, let's go ahead and open this up for the public if there's no further comments or questions from board members. And so open it up for the public. Any comments on those new special dates? Special meeting dates. And let's go ahead and bring it back to the board and let's make that into a motion, please.
So if you want me to lay it out for someone, the dates?
That'd be great.
Yeah, so someone can say so moved.
I'll do that.
So, so we are proposing additional special meeting dates of November fifth from nine to one PM and December ninth from one to five PM.
So moved.
Second.
We have a.
Oh, okay. So Anita is advising, just make it November fifth, nine AM, and December ninth, one PM. That way if you get done early, you can, we can leave.
So moved.
Let's not say.
Second.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott? Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I move that we remove special meeting date November eighteenth, 2021 from the Board of Supervisors' annual calendar.
Second.
Motion from Supervisor Pyska, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
There's an echo in the room.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's go ahead and move on to item seven point four, consideration of A, lease for commercial property located at five two five North Main Street, Lakeport, and B, authorize a department head to sign on behalf of the Lake County Behavioral Health Services. And Director Metcalf, good afternoon and welcome back.
Yes, thanks for having me back again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of Lake County Behavioral Services. So as the board memo states, this item is for a lease on a new space to house our Circle of Native Minds Peer Support Center, which was, or yeah, was currently in Lakeport. The, the Circle of Native Minds primarily serves our Native American demographic, but like all of our peer support centers, it is open to serve all. Since this, since this is funded with Mental Health Services Act dollars, which some of you may be familiar with, that those monies need to be spent based upon commuter, commuter, community stakeholder input. The decision to move involved much community stakeholder input and support. As outlined in the board memo, the previous location in Lakeport was on Bedden Street, had various issues that were problematic to our type of service delivery. So this, this new location is much better suited as it has, actually has multiple confidential office spaces, is, is closer to the courthouse and downtown Lakeport. And it even has an outdoor garden area that we plan to use as a garden, gardening opportunity for our clients. And really the best part about it is the lease, the monthly amount on this lease is less than what we were paying before in the, in the former location. So with that, I'm, I'm requesting board approval of this lease because we feel that this will be a much more conducive space to serve, to serve our clients.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Scott?
Just that I was at a couple of these community meetings speaking about native mines, and I definitely agree with Director Metcalf that this would be a much better location.
It got hot in that building.
Well, and they were, as, as outlined in the memo, I mean, we were having, we were having internet issues, Wi-Fi issues. And then when, which I was pleased to see, you know, the brewery and restaurant opening next door and all about new businesses, just wasn't. and restaurant opening next door and all about new businesses, just wasn't conducive to our, you know, our Alcoholics Anonymous meetings that it's, it just, the whole thing wasn't working. And so, this space is, I'm very excited about it, also because, as I mentioned earlier, that there are more spaces to have confidential meetings with clients because we are hoping to eventually Medical certify this facility so we can provide more intense mental health services there as well. So, I'm really excited about this.
Thank you very much. I do have a quick question for you. So, obviously, it shows a lower square footage cost or per square footage cost. You had mentioned earlier for the previous one that you had kind of met your threshold when it came to insurance, landscaping, and all other utilities. I'm guessing that those utilities will probably be approximately the same for this and that it will not reach as high as that threshold?
That's what I'm hoping. The former building, for those of you, and it sounds like Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor, you guys have been in there, it had these high ceilings and utilities. I would say in this facility, which is more of a normal type of a building, would be less. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. If there's no further questions, then let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments or questions from the public? All right, seeing none, let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a lease for commercial property located at 525 North Main Street, Lakeport, and authorize a department head to sign on behalf of Lake County Behavioral Health Services.
Okay.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Crandall, and almost a close third. Let's go ahead and get a roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.5, consideration of resolution granting authority to execute the Golden State Connect Authority Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. Cao Hutchinson.
Susan Parker is here again today, and she, this is another of her items. So, go ahead, Susan.
Yes, thank you, Carol. Good afternoon, board. Your board has taken some initial steps to prepare Lake County for both federal and state broadband funding opportunities. Those actions have included a letter of support for strategic planning for the Economic Development Administration application, and the county has also entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Golden State Finance Authority. Subsequently, the Rural County Representatives of California, or RCRC, voted to approve the formation of a joint exercise powers authority entitled Golden State Connect Authority. This authority will ensure that all members have new or updated broadband strategic plans. They will provide information and resources about innovative models and approaches to broadband development, and they will implement open access municipal broadband projects or pilot projects. Staff recommends adopting this resolution to execute the Golden State Authority Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. I know this has been in the works for quite a while and exciting to have it come to us. I wanted to offer a chance for Supervisor Crandall in case there was any words of this to add.
No, I don't have any.
Okay. I just know that it's been a deep discussion with RCRC and GFSA for at least the past six months, if not longer. This is one of their priorities, is broadband in California, especially when it comes to rural communities. So, thankful for RCRC's work on this. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Simon?
Just, you know, obviously, another step forward for the county, but also, just looking at the long-term viability, we had the conversation earlier, and we've already got a dig-once policy that we're looking at for the county. You know, it's looking to advance that. When we're talking about undergrounding utilities, this is another conversation to be had. Dig-once, we can get the stuff in the ground. And so, you know, this collaboration and coordination, I think, is going to be very important for the next decade in improving our assistance. So, I completely support it, and just wanted to make that comment that it's all going to tie together as we're digging here in Lake County.
And thank you for reminding us of that dig-once policy. We did bring it to the board. It did make its way to a couple different departments, but never came back to us. This will, I think, be something that once we have our new director with their feet on the ground, solidly upstairs, that's something that we can follow up on and see about bringing it back. So, I appreciate you reminding us of that. Any further comments before we open up for public? I feel like I'm getting the eye to move it along. So, we'll open it up for the public for any questions or comments. And seeing and hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Offered the resolution.
Resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Yes.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move along to item 7.6, consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Hartley Cemetery District. Are there any questions for board members on the applicant? And seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any questions or comments about the applicant? And let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Nancy Hudson for the Hartley Cemetery District.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving along to 7.7A, consideration of the effects of Assembly Bill 361, and B, consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing teleconference meetings during a state of emergency and possible direction to other board-established commissions, committees, and boards subject to the Brown Act. Ms. Graham?
Thank you, board. Thank you, chair. 361 is an effort to extend the ability of a local legislative body to continue to meet as a teleconference meeting in some form or fashion with members of the board after the September 30th deadline of the executive order of the governor, at which time the executive order allowing these teleconference meetings that allow board members to appear by Zoom will expire. The requirements for this, the legislation leaves a little bit to be desired in terms of language, and of course, all of the county attorneys are arguing over it, which is typical for anything like this. But I've prepared a resolution that outlines the basics for you. This type of an extension is something that your board can do if it is related to the ongoing emergency, the ongoing pandemic. This bill will also apply, 361 will also apply in future circumstances in the event an emergency is declared for fire, flood, or anything else. But right now, what you're talking about is the pandemic that is ongoing due to COVID-19. The resolution itself will allow you to recognize that because you have implemented measures for social distancing within county buildings, and there is an ongoing state of emergency, state-declared emergency, that there may be a need for certain teleconference meetings to occur either of your full board or of various members, depending upon circumstances that are related to the emergency itself.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions about this item and the resolution? All right. I think that when looking at our work protocol, policy that we have, the fact that if we even have a sniffle, that we don't want people coming in to work, I think we want to try to continue and make sure that the work that gets done here continues as efficiently as possible. And if it happens that we have a few of us that are sick, but yet still can work, instead of coming in here, it's just, it continues to provide safe continuance of what we do, and I think it's the right thing to do. So, I appreciate the resolution coming to us, describing what AV361 looks like and what it would do to us. And I hope that we can continue this level of ability to have these conversations with multiple types of platforms, as long as we maintain this platform as well. So...
Mr. Chair, there is a 30-day review requirement, and I would suggest this is a relatively generally phrased resolution because of the rapid turnaround from the passage of this assembly bill and the executive order's expiration of September 30th. However, I think that within that time period, to have further direction from the public health officer with regard to continued social distancing and the need to allow for teleconference meetings will be very helpful for the board to have as you proceed with this over the coming months.
Thank you for that. Are there any? Supervisor Scott?
So, just to make this clear, so we agree on this and we vote on this. It will cover all our committees. So, like EJ's three committees that he has, my Scott Valley Committee, we would be covered under this. There's no action needed at those committees?
Well, what the
Someone turned on their Zoom.
What the ordinance?
Yeah, her Zoom is unmuted. There you go.
What the ordinance does, after the third time, right now, it authorizes all board-established commissions, committees, and boards subject to the Brown Act to adopt the required findings provided in Assembly Bill 361 should they deem them applicable, necessary, and justified under the ongoing state of emergency. Now, that can be adjusted. There's considerable disagreement as to whether each individual body is going to have to make their own findings. However, I would suggest that your board could issue a directive for simply the special boards that are appointed, your municipal advisory commissions, and those types of things. However, statutory bodies that are appointed by your board, such as the Planning Commission for one, really should have to do these themselves. What, how I've drafted it, again, because the question is still being discussed, was to make it clear that your board authorized them to move forward if they make findings. And right now, what I can do, if it's the direction of your board, is simply provide this template for those entities so they can continue forward. In the alternative, as I said, if you don't have any intention of attempting to meet remotely until the next board meeting, I can make an adjustment. Or the language could be adjusted to, to simply authorize that all board-established commissions, committees, and boards subject to the requirement of the Brown Act shall be subject to this resolution. I can just change the language along those lines if your board would like to amend it on its face.
I would prefer it that way.
I would appreciate that.
That'd be great.
So, did you have a question, Supervisor Simon? Okay. I do have a question. What about boards that are multi-jurisdictional? Does each jurisdiction have to pass this resolution in order for those types, like LTA or APC, LAFCO, or things like that? Are they on their own?
Yes.
Okay. So, they have to pass those resolutions themselves?
Without doubt. Yes. Your board is not the sole and only appointing authority on any of those.
And there's a public seat as well, so that doesn't even have a jurisdiction other than that board.
Exactly. Exactly. They'll have to take it, they'll have to take it up independently.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions before?
Yeah.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that the RCRC board had stated that if we weren't to make like the meeting that's coming up this week, that we weren't allowed to come in via Zoom. So, we have to be there. Because of what the county council's talking about, we would have to be present in order to vote or be a part of that meeting. So, I know that other entities are making these same, you know, doing the same thing, so.
Thank you for that.
Just to follow clarification, too. So, all JPAs, everything, would have to take this up individually.
Yes, yes. But we're happy to provide this same template.
Okay.
And again, it would be prudent to have an update as soon as possible from a public health officer with regard to social distancing. You know, Caloosa had had some regulations with regard to social distancing. Those are being reviewed and may not be as stringent as they were before. Your board has already put those policies in place for county buildings, but it would behoove you to have some additional support, and a public health officer would be the most logical choice.
Perfect. Thank you. If there's no further comments, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments or questions from the public in the Zoom room? And hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back. And would it be, it's possible to pass today this resolution with the amendments
Yes.
that you've provided, and so, looking for that action.
Offer the resolution as amended in that case.
I'll offer the resolution as amended.
Thank you. Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, that concludes our open session items other than our calendars. So, let's go ahead and start with supervisors' weekly calendars, and we will begin with District 1, Supervisor Simon.
Finish up the board meeting today. Tomorrow, have CDD committee meeting, looks like, on Wednesday. Thursday, again, going to be meeting with Fish and Game down in my district. And then, Friday, have the drought ELC meeting. And then, I don't have anything on the 2nd. Do have a Friday night football game here in Lakeport, which should be an exciting one. And then, back here on Monday with a meeting with Carol, and then Board of Supervisors on Tuesday.
Do we have our meeting on Saturday?
Yeah, special board meeting. You do have something Saturday.
Oh, yeah. I see. That's not on my calendar.
All right, let's go ahead and move on and go backwards to District 5.
Getting all crazy?
It's the end of the day.
Tomorrow, I have a TAC meeting, a CDD committee. I'm having a site visit with Water Resources. Thursday, where I'm having a meeting with Supervisor Sabatier and Anita, Director Evaluations. And Side Street Market is, I think it's maybe the last one, and the dine-out for hospice is also September 30th in the evening. Friday, the ARPA Care Act meeting, and a pre-capacity report interview with the new clerk intern on Friday. Saturday, I'm going to make an 8:00 AM soccer game before the Board of Supervisors' meeting. There's the Fiddler's Jam on Sunday. And Monday, my meeting with Carol, and then back here on Tuesday.
And let's go ahead and move on to District 4. Supervisor Scott?
Okay, tomorrow, I have a meeting in the morning with a council member from Lakeport. On Thursday, I have a special Hope Rising board meeting, which now I'm thinking, Anita, I'm going to need that template because we're going to have to pass something with Hope Rising to be able to continue our telecommunication meetings. So, I'm going to have to see if I can't get that on the agenda as an emergency item.
I'll send it to you. I'll send it to you.
Great, now that I'm thinking about that. On Friday, I have lunch with Hope Rising and Senator McGuire, and then attending a Suboptimist event in the evening. On Saturday, there'll be the Cancer Walk in Lakeport, which I will be missing, because we'll be having a special board meeting. And then, on the fourth, there's a SafeRx meeting at 10:30. And then, I have a meeting with Faith from Hope Rising at 1:00. And then, 2:00, I have a meeting with the Scotts Valley Group, looking at our water basin, and then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Crandall, District 3.
Yeah, so I'll...
Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I said, I said the wrong thing.
Different, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay, I don't know what happened, sorry. Wanted to give an update on the Blue Ribbon Committee that took place last week. There were five projects that the county had submitted to go on the Prop 68 funds to turn into the state, and they were all approved by the committee, so we're hoping that they go forward, and the state will approve them, and what the Chair had stated is that he thinks it's likely, but you know, of course, we still want to wait for that, and that's the Lake County Storm Water and Trash Cleanup, that was presented by Angela, Angela Dow, and then there was the Dilapidated Structure Abatement, that was, that was presented by William Fox, which was approved. The Scotts Valley Groundwater Airborne Electromagnet Survey, Scotts Valley and William Fox, they presented that, it went really well, and approved. Kelsey Creek Fish Ladder, that was presented by Sarah Ryan, and the Tulley Replanting and Invasive Aquatic Vegetation Replanting was, was presented as well, and they were all approved. So, we're hoping that those projects go forward, those are actually some steps, I think, that are a little more than study, I know one's a survey, but it's always good to see a lot more action than studies, we've been studying this lake for how long, and so it was really good to see a lot of those good, you'd approved, and we're hoping that the state does the same thing, so that's where, I just wanted to report on the Blue Ribbon Committee on that effect, so.
And you have a fan of one of those projects from District 4.
All right, yeah, so, good news, right? So, so tonight, actually after this meeting, I'll be traveling for the annual meeting for RCRC, we didn't have one last year, I think the year before, Bruno, you had went to the, to the one previous to this year. Last year, of course, COVID didn't allow it, so we'll go into Monterey, we have a robust schedule starting tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and goes all the way till Friday, when we have our board meeting, and then, of course, it looks like I'll be coming back to the Board of Supervisors meeting on Saturday, 9:00, and then, of course, Monday, Middle Creek Restoration Committee meeting, a meeting with Carol, and back here on Tuesday for the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you very much. Just want to check real quick, I know that with our inability to actually take the time to put it into our calendar, September 30 was canceled as a day for evals, correct?
September 30, no evals that day.
Yeah, because of the RCRC meeting, it was not put on there, so I just wanted to make sure.
You have that too?
I had it.
Nope.
I, I, I did not have it, I added it after she said it.
The dates you should have on your calendar, up to the ones you just approved, are October 7th and November 4th, and then the two additional ones you just approved today. So October 7th and November 4th, starting at 1:00. Carolyn Purdy said she's putting them on your calendar.
That's very appreciated.
All four of them.
Yes. Okay, let's go back to what's going on here. Tomorrow, we have agenda review, and I am meeting with some constituents, not much on my calendar at that point. I am actually going to restart one of my, it's, it's actually really something I enjoy, we are rebooting the Judge's Breakfast over in the city of Clear Lake, it looks like the, we've been trying to work with the restaurant we've always gone to, but they aren't quite comfortable yet in the status that we are with COVID-19, and the size of the restaurant, and the amount of people that show up, so we will be going to the Senior Highlands, Highland Senior Center over at the Community Center, and looking forward, it's now turned into a fundraiser, as well as a Judge's Breakfast, because then we'll be, all be paying for the buffet breakfast, and providing some income to the Senior Center, which is always useful. Meeting some, with some constituents later in the afternoon, and before that in the morning, also having a water discussion with Supervisor Pyska. And then, on October 1st, starting off the day with a drought meeting, it looks like we have an ARPA meeting that I have not quite approved yet, so that's gonna be approved now. Then Senator McGuire will be here in the afternoon to do a quick tour of the cash fires, see how things are going physically. There has been a lot set up to make sure and maintain the debris, and I'm believing that now that so much time has come by, that we might be two to three weeks off from finishing all of the cleanup with CalOES, they had given us a four to six-week plan, and so we'll see how far away that is, and then I will be having a meeting later on with Senator McGuire as well. Then we have the Saturday meeting, and the following Monday, starting off with Middle Creek Restoration, and... Meeting with our CAO, and getting prepared for our Tuesday meeting for the 5th, and that, I believe, concludes our open session meeting, that's right, we're not quite done yet, because we still have one item, and I'm gonna call out that item again one more time, it's 8.2 in closed session, Public Employee Evaluation, titled Director, Health Services Director, and with that, we will go ahead and close our open session. Did I miss anything?
No, but a new Zoom link will be coming for the final item.
So a new Zoom link, please look for that in your email, and thank you very much, everyone, for joining us, we'll see you next week.